All right, I will call this regularly scheduled meeting on Bridgewater Town Council Water. This is our last full official council meeting of this council term. Our next council meeting is on the 29th, which will be the last council meeting for this term with this council as we also swear in the new council. So that's a good time to remind folks that it is municipal election season in Nova Scotia, so no matter where you live, whether it's in the town of Bridgewater or whatever municipality, please vote. Election day is Saturday, but most municipalities you can vote online any time, and especially in the town of Bridgewater, you should have had your pin, otherwise you can come into Town Hall, speak to Julie, she's on the main floor, right off Pleasant Street. Before we continue, just a reminder that the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unseen ancestral territory of Mi'kmaq people, and it is our privilege to be here. And I am just going to ask if there are any additions or deletions to the agenda. Hearing none, motion to approve the agenda is circulated, council is going down to announcements. I have a couple here, but as I scroll to those, are there any announcements from members of council? No? Okay, let me just write my email. I've got a bunch of stuff from Donna here. I know it's here somewhere. Okay. Where did that go? So I know there's an event at the Best Western tomorrow evening, or tomorrow afternoon, rather, for Small Business Week, which kicks off. Thank you, Amanda. So just ahead, Small Business Week, town has partnered with other municipalities and chambers of commerce, board of trade within Littleburg and Queen's to host a full day of business information sessions and trade show filled with resources for existing and new businesses. This full free day itinerary takes place at the Best Western from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the theme is "The Power of Small: Defying the Odds." So everyone's attended, so be sure to attend and look out for our own Economic Development Officer, Donna Hat, who will be in attendance. And also, congratulations to Donna, who raced a pumpkin in Shelburne and came in sixth out of 16?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Okay.
All right. Sometimes it's not better to correct me. It sounded better when it was sixteen. But congratulations. That's just amazing. The other thing that's pretty exciting is from October 20th to 22nd, Bridgewater will welcome delegates from the International Network of Michelin Cities, which is from Claremont Fronde, which is the home of Michelin. And we've prepared a dynamic itinerary for their visit, including site visits to our Michelin luncheon to launch the signing of the INMC Corridor of Incubation Agreement, also pretty cool, to foster some international business development and attraction, and we'll be hosting a dinner in partnership with the Minister of Economic Development, Susan Cork and Greek. So joining us will be Jerome, Helen, and Cecile, all from Claremont Fronde, and all who work directly with the International Network of Michelin Cities. So for those who are not familiar, this is a group of cities, us included, who have two things in common. One is that they have a Michelin in their community, and the other is that they are working towards a sustainable and green future. And so we work together with these. Bridgewater is one of the founding members with Claremont Fronde and is one of only two permanent board members on the International Network of Michelin Cities. And it's just been quite a phenomenal group to be a part of. We've had a few events that we've gone to. Deputy Mayor has attended, and Councilor Tanner attended as well, as our Director of Community Development and Economic Development Officer, so stay tuned for that. Any other announcements from council? All right, we have a timed delegation. I see Mr. Powell is here, so Mark, welcome, if you want to come to the podium and speak about the Maritime Housing Society's request for attainable home ownership fund. And just a reminder that you have 10 minutes, but that doesn't include any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, and the council members and the staff. I kept it short here in terms of the actual document. I thought in the 10 minutes I had to start with, to see if they had any questions that I could address up front in terms of what has been in the document, and then I can just go through a summary of, if you'll answer any of your questions and sort of summarize what the request is about. Are there any questions, just from the reading?
So in summary, there's been a policy change within the federal government and also within the province around how they regard homeownership. A lot of the focus has been, in terms of funding, is focused on affordable rental, and it has its challenges in terms of creating sort of long-term stability in the economy and local economy and diversity and so forth. So six months ago, we applied, we being the Maritime Housing Society, applied for a series of grants, which at the provincial level were accepted around attainable home ownership to provide seed funding for the pre-construction financing for projects, to provide community development funding, research and development towards construction techniques, more innovation funding techniques, and so forth. It was supported at a provincial level, but it's a federal program, and they went up to the federal program and said, "We don't do homeownership," and that was the end of that. So we were then looking for different ways to secure funding for the projects. The Maritime Housing Society is set up as a nonprofit developer and is based on a model through Options for Homes out of Ontario, was in the 1990s, was able to work with the Canadian Mortgage and Housing Association to say, "Will you recognize the contributions of a nonprofit, either in kind or profits," or something like that, and recognize that as a way of providing a second mortgage to people who qualify financially but are only able to come up with a 5% down payment but would like to own a home and are capable of owning a home. And that, through the CMHC, worked very well through some of their programs, and Options for Homes was able to build about 1,300 homes, homes that were smaller, well-good, quality, energy-efficient, and so forth. A year ago, the CMHC pulled that program, so the nonprofit developers did not have a way of providing a second mortgage financing to people who are looking to buy a house. And so we ended up having to find a different way to develop our projects, and we went to the Community Foundation of Nova Scotia and said, "Listen, can you set up a fund specifically to support nonprofit developers, to help them through the beginning of getting their project site ready?" And they agreed to help us set up the fund, so it's the first of its kind in the province, and it's called the Atainable Home Ownership Fund, which is what we're here for. The CFNS is part of a Canadian foundation. They distributed last year about $3 million in donations. What they do, they receive donations from private or from public sources, or businesses, and those funds can go towards specific purposes. And then they distribute those funds to whoever's requiring or qualifies for those funds. So right now, they have 14 community funds, they have eight donor-advised funds, sorry, 18 donor-advised funds, and then they have a new category called an impact fund. So the Atainable Home Ownership Fund is one of those impact funds. So when CFNS receives the money, it has to go somewhere, and typically, they have to form a partnership with the, we have to form partnerships with an organization that has the ability to receive the funds and distribute the funds. And that's where this request comes from, is that the CFNS needs to give the money to a party that will, the money, the Atainable Home Ownership Fund has a board of advisors that will qualify all the requests, and I set the criteria out in here. And then if those requests are qualified, they need then to go to a body who's holding the money and distributes the money. So this request is basically for the town of Bridgewater's finance department to receive the money from the Atainable Home Ownership Fund and distribute it based on those requests from nonprofit developers that the society, or so the fund advisors qualify, and then be able to distribute the money. So that's what the request is about. The money is intended to go to nonprofit developers who are developing a table of homeownership, and some of the other criteria that are set out here. And so then it's really then being, what this request is about is that will the town receive, and the finance department receive and distribute the money that comes through to support these projects that is going to be qualified and going towards the nonprofit developers. The Board of Advisors itself, I'm one of the people there at the Board of Advisors, we have someone else who's a nonprofit developer, someone who's actually works for the town of Bridgewater, someone who works for an architect whose background is around developing long-term care, seniors' residence, and hospitals, and so forth, and we also have someone who's from a social enterprise called Food Rives that is looking to build sustainable committees down in Riverport. That's my summary.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. I know that this is on the agenda later on for council to discuss, but if there are any questions? No? Councilor Callahan?
Will the projects, will the funds for the projects go towards anything other than, any place other than Bridgewater?
They could. They could go to projects located elsewhere, yes. But there needs to be a, it's important that we start with a proof of concept and develop some projects here, and then be able, the whole idea is to develop a model that any nonprofit developer can come in and say, "There's a funding mechanism, here's a mortgage financing mechanism that I can use to build attainable home ownership in the province."
But it would, the idea would be to start here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So essentially, the ask is to set this up like a designated community fund where we receive funds?
So it's a little bit, it is a...
Not for province, so...
Right, it's the same concept, except for we'd be entering into an agreement with the Community Foundation of Nova Scotia to disperse the funds for this particular purpose, and you'd want to develop some criteria around that, because I think the idea would be that you'd be able to, wouldn't have to be delayed by a month to take it to a meeting to get it approved, that type of thing. So it's a little bit more agile in terms of how we would disperse it, and you're guaranteeing that if they give it to you, you're giving it for that purpose, which is a little different than our designated community fund program, where we're clear we're taking it in, and it's up to council what projects they fund with.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Yeah, we'll circle back to this later on the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you for receiving my request.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, are there any other members of the public that wish to address council? All right, as we continue on, we have the minutes for September 9th and September 23rd. Have there been circulated any errors or omissions on those? Hearing none, can a motion be approved? The minutes is circulated, please. Deputy Mayor for Gier, second to by, Councilor McDonal, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And now we're down to what is going to be the first of three public hearings, so just a reminder for council and the public, this is kind of like a meeting within a meeting, so I'm going to kind of pause the council meeting. We will begin a public hearing, we will go through the steps of the public hearing. At the end of that, I will recess the public hearing, go back to council, where council will make a decision. That is very clear, not confusing at all. So just to note that all the statutory requirements have been met, there is time for public input on these, but I will note when that time is. And so I will now pause our regular council meeting and call the public hearing for item 7.1, which is the C8 zone for 76 Dominion Street. Again, note that all the statutory requirements have been met, and turn it over to Connor.
Good evening, council. So this is an application regarding the C8 zone, specifically 76 Dominion. It is a staff-led process, and that means there's no application from property owner or any development plan for the subject property. So this is a two-part process. Part one was completed in February 2024, and that entailed the rezoning of four C8 zone properties, and it included text amendments to the C7 zone to expand the permissions of said zone. This is part two, returning to council tonight, and that's broken into two presentations, the first 76 Dominion and the second regarding eight properties in the C8 zone. So this is just a quick map of 76 Dominion, so it's located on Dominion Street, obviously, between York and Churchill Streets, and it's adjacent to the Bridgewater Curling Club. The property was used until recently as an automobile parts sales and service center and has an existing designation of medium density residential. The property's been sold, but the use of automobile parts sales and service would be permitted as a legal nonconforming use should it be reinstated within one year. The new property owner has expressed a desire to stay within the C8 zone with the intention of changing the permitted use to a household repair service. For moving forward, there's two options for council to consider. The first would be to complete an MPS and LUB text amendment to Policy C55 and Table T respectively, to change the permitted site-specific commercial use. Second option would be to retain the C8 zone and necessitate a development agreement for the change of commercial use. So option one, to complete MPS, Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw text amendments. This would entail conducting the first reading, excuse me, second reading of the proposed amendments to change the specific use in Table T from automobile and automobile parts sales and service to a household repair service. This option will maintain the special commercial zoning and have household repair services be the sole as-of-right commercial use permitted on the subject property in accordance with the permissions of the C8 zone. This option would ultimately require an amendment to Policy C55, which permits developments in existence before the date of the 2014 Municipal Planning Strategy and listed in the land use bylaw. This option would expedite the process to permit the use of a household repair service on the subject property, taking approximately two to three months. The second option for council to consider is to not conduct a first or second reading, excuse me, thereby maintaining the special commercial zone. This option would retain the same permissions as today and would require the owner of the property to apply for a development agreement should they wish to change, use the property as a household repair service. This option would be supported by the Policy C55 and the intention of the C8 zone to mitigate conflicts between those commercial properties, commercial uses within the zone and abutting property owners. The process would ultimately take five to seven months from the date of development agreement application to a decision by council. There are some impacts of the property, or the different options, excuse me. For option one, if text amendments were made to the Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw, this enables other properties within the C8 zone to apply for a text amendment rather than a development agreement for a change of use within the C8 zone. If council decides to maintain the C8 zone, there would be no impact to policy or policy intention, however, there would be added time and cost for the property owner to go through the development agreement process. So that lands with the two options. First, council conducts first reading of the Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw text amendments to change the specific use from Table T from automobile parts sales and service to a household repair service for the property at 76 Dominion. Second, council does not conduct the reading, thereby maintaining special commercial zone for the property at 76 Dominion and requiring the development agreement. Ultimately, staff recommends that the amendments are denied and the zone is maintained for the property at 76 Dominion. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Questions from council? This is second reading, Councilor Callahan?
Option two, you said, okay, it's going to take a little bit longer, and you've said there's some costs involved.
Yeah.
What kind of costs?
I believe it's a $1,200 or $1,800 application fee, and then that any downstream capacity assessments that may be required, or any other assessments done for staff to enable the rezoning, potentially a higher impact use, so it would require downstream capacity assessment and such.
Other questions?
So it's clear that the amendments that council are approving is, I believe, option one, which is the changes to Table T?
Yes, exactly.
To reflect the, yeah, reflect the existing use that's in place.
Just the text.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the use. Other questions or comments on that? No? Okay, that's good. I don't know if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this particular Hearing none? Okay. Oh, yep. If you can just come to the microphone and just identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name's David Roman, and I also have a C8 property. So I'm slightly curious about, I didn't quite understand the process, and so it sounds like it's a change of use, both of these things that you guys are voting on are change of use, but I couldn't quite figure out the logic behind them. Is there a way you can explain that in simple English?
I tried to. So this process was a little unique. There was a sale of the property during the first consideration of the proposed changes, the initial changes to the C8 zone, which was going to take the C8 zone out of our land use bylaw and our zoning map. The property was sold, and the user, or the new owner was intending to do a different business than the automobile parts sales and service, and through this process, we captured that as a text amendment, basically through these amendments, and just included as part of the process, rather than going through the onerous process of a development agreement and potentially making that property unusable for the use of the new property owner.
Yeah, so again, essentially, what happened was we did first reading, and then someone bought the property. So in the middle of that comes this potential change of use, which would have halted his business. So by doing the text amendments, it means that he can continue to operate versus a months-long process where he...
Right, so I mean, I guess what I'm asking for is how, if I was to do the same thing with my C8 property, if I was to change the use, what's the, I guess, the advantage in one of these two things that you're, I guess this is a new type of way of changing use, is what you're implementing? The text amendment?
No, we've done text amendments in the past.
It does happen in the past. The C8 zone is quite particular, as there's only one use permitted on the property other than the one and two-unit residential, and so this is going through an amendment to our...
Oh, okay. So anybody else with a C8 property who was going to change the use could then come to council, and these two things would be considered?
And that's why I outlined in option one, and that was part of the impact, is that would cause, that would allow that, that would open that up to potentially...
So what you're doing here would apply to somebody else as well?
It could, yeah.
Somebody come in and ask for a text amendment?
It would, again, it still would be subject to the council approval, but yes, it would...
Oh, so this isn't having any impact outside of this?
This single...
Yeah, this is only for this particular property.
Ah, okay, and if another property wants it, then the same process would repeat?
It would make application.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the public?
Yeah, anyone else in the public? Hearing none, I will adjourn the public hearing, will return to open session, and I will be looking for direction from council. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Callahan, thank you.
I'm the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater, conduct second and final reading of Bylaw 214, a bylaw to amend the Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw as shown in Appendix C of Document 24-008F1 with respect to a change in use within Table T from automotive parts sales and service to household repair services for the property at 76 Dominion Street.
Thank you. Second to by, Councilor Callahan, further discussion? Let me just add that I know it may look strange, because if you're looking at the screen, essentially what we did was the first one, even though the second one was recommended by staff, but to me, that's the beauty of this process, is that staff follows, I don't want to say the black and white of what's written, but it's making the recommendation based on that, whereas council is kind of using this as, you know, we get feedback from the public, and we have a little bit more of the ability to move us in a different direction. So I just wanted to clarify that, so people don't think, "Oh, this is council going against staff." No, this is exactly how the democratic process is supposed to work, right? And we've worked through this with staff together. So it's not us kind of, we're not going against Connor. Connor is bringing us the information that he's providing, and we're kind of taking some of that and moving it a little bit differently, so that's what I love about municipal government. Anyway, we have a meeting, we have a second ready for the question. Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. So now we get to go down to 7.2, which is public hearing number two, so again, we'll recess the council meeting. You're in for such a treat. Come to the last council meeting, and you're in for three public hearings. So I will recess the, yeah, recess the, the council meeting, call the public hearing to order. Again, I'll note that all the statutory requirements have been met on this, and turn it over to Connor once again for this one.
So again, this is a part, the second presentation for amendments to the C8 zone this evening. So I'll go over the process to date. On August 12th, a public hearing took place where residents of, with properties containing commercial uses within the C8 zone spoke out against the proposed rezoning of the special commercial C8 zone. Following the public hearing, council made a motion to retain the zone and maintain those six properties with commercial uses in said zone. Further discussion from council, this gives a little context as to what David was saying, further discussion from council on August 12th provided direction to consider planning document amendments to permit the change of use for 76 Dominion Street, which was considered in the previous presentation. And so I guess tonight, we will be discussing the proposed redesignation and/or rezoning of C8 zone properties. One property that I will be going over is proposed for redesignation, while eight properties are proposed for re-zonings. So within the special commercial zone, there are eight properties which have discontinued their commercial uses, and based on staff discussions, public engagement, and the results of the public hearing, there are six properties which still contain existing commercial uses or who wish to continue their commercial operations. First of the discontinued commercial uses is 255 Victoria. This is the one property that would require concurrent amendments to the Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw, and would entail a redesignation and rezoning. 255 Victoria was formerly hosted of wood product sales use. The existing designation is split between the limited commercial and low-density residential designations, though High Street was thought to be developing as a commercial stretch as more recently seen residential uses be developed in this area, and for this reason, staff is proposing the comprehensive residential R3 zone. The remaining seven properties which have discontinued their commercial uses are being proposed for re-zonings only in accordance with the future land use map and the intention of the C8 zone. There you can see the current permitted use, but all will be going to, are proposed for a residential use. There are six existing commercial uses within the zone. First, 1675 King Street is known to contain the Canadian Food Inspection Agency. 31 Riverview Drive contains an automotive repair shop. 58 Elm hosts a blacksmith shop but is currently undergoing renovations. 359 Pearl, excuse me, 359 St. Philip Street contains a towing and salvage yard. 90 Pearl Street contains a used automobile sales use. And ultimately, should council retain these properties within the special commercial C8 zone, no changes would be made. The impact would be for those properties that are rezoned and redesignated. The existing uses and buildings could remain, but all future uses must be permitted within the new zone, and all future buildings would have to adhere to those new zone standards. Ultimately, it's recommended that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the proposed map and text amendments for the Municipal Planning Strategy. strategy and land use by law in Appendix C and revisit the remaining special commercial C8 zone properties as part of the plan review process.
Thank you, Connor. Any questions from council? I feel like we've had this, I know this is the second reading, I feel like we've had this more than twice. Councilor McDonald?
Just to clarify this, any discontinued uses are removed from this and anyone who is still continuing their use can continue their use?
Exactly, yeah.
That's great. Any other questions? Again, this is one that was adapted after some feedback from the public. A number of members of the public came and spoke to council and so some adjustments were made. So that's great. Any other questions from council? On this particular item, are there any members of the public that wish to have any questions answered? No, then I will adjourn the public hearing, will return to a regular council session and I'll be looking for some direction from council on this. Deputy Mayor for chair.
Put forward a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater conduct second and final reading of Bylaw number 218, a bylaw to amend to the municipal planning strategy and land use by law as shown in Appendix A to D of Document 24-008G1 to redesignate 255 Victoria Road from low-density residential and limited commercial to comprehensive residential designation. And two, to rezone 255 Victoria Road from special commercial C8 zone to comprehensive residential R3 zone. And third item is to rezone seven properties from special commercial, the C8 zone, to the two-unit residential, the R2 zone, in accordance with the future land use map.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Tanner. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. We are down to our last public hearing. I think a lot of people are here to listen to for the Winburn Avenue topic, which is next. So we are now going to go to our third public hearing. So again, I will reassess the council meeting, call the public hearing to order, note that all the statutory requirements have been met, and so turn it over to our Director of Community Development.
I'll just give it a moment. The presentation? No. Tech support has been called in.
That's it.
There you go.
There it is.
This one?
No, yes. All right, keeping us on our toes.
Tech support is generally just someone younger.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a presentation to the proposed amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use by law concerning the Le Havre River Development Agreement area. So the desired outcome of these amendments are to allow a change of use within the existing zoning permissions within the Le Havre River Development Agreement area overlay zone without requiring development agreement, which is how the policy is now. And really, that's about reducing and streamlining some of the development process within the Le Havre River Development Agreement area without compromising the intention of the zone. So you are probably going, which is the Le Havre River Development Agreement area? So in our simplified zoning map here, it shows, it is a zone that overlays on top of the other existing zones for properties that are adjacent to the Le Havre River. And it is, it's overlaid on top of those existing commercial residential zones and adds an additional layer of protection. So the current policy and by law requires that all developments within that zone be considered only by development agreement unless they are less than 50 meters squared in gross floor area or an accessory building or a park. And so anything over 50 meters squared, even if it's occupying an existing building, requires a development agreement. So why require those development agreements adjacent to the Le Havre River? It has some primary reasons, such as protection from flood risk, alignment to the downtown waterfront master plan where that's applicable, managing the site functionality and compatibility with the riverscape and streetscape in our downtown core particularly, and maintaining that visual and physical access to the river. So a development agreement allows council to negotiate with larger developments to ensure those types of connections and types of considerations that council is concerned about, such as flood risk along the Le Havre or its connection to the river, which goes through the middle of our community, are maintained. However, the unintended policy impact of that is that certainly within the, you know, within an existing development agreement or an existing building that has been built per the requirements of that existing development agreement, a change of use within the existing property can't happen if it's over 50 meters squared. And so this change of use refers to when it changes to a different permission within that zoning. So each area of zoning, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial or open space zoning that has this overlay zone, has a list of permitted uses as of right that generally, if you weren't in the Le Havre River Development Agreement area, you could simply go in and apply for a change of use through a development permit process and be granted that new use. Whereas in the Le Havre River Development Agreement zone, you have to go through the development agreement process, which, as we were just discussing in the previous two items, can be a longer, you know, many months process rather than just a couple of weeks. So the proposed amendments are simply to add to the list of exemptions, a change of use and associated signage. And that's because signage is also wrapped up in the definition of development. So in the, looking at one of the Le Havre Commercial Zone across the road with the mall, you have some large signs there and other things, and sometimes that can fall into this category as well. So we've included any associated signage to add that to that list of exemptions within the Le Havre River Development Agreement area. So that would allow for those new uses that are already permitted in the underlying zoning, allow for any new signage that might be wrapped up in such a development, and still requires additions or new developments over 50 meters squared to go through the development agreement process. So that intended policy is still there and is not compromised with these amendments. So the proposed policy, LR2, would then read, "It shall be the policy of council to consider only by development agreement in areas designated as the Le Havre River Development Agreement area on the zoning map of the land use by law. Proposals for any development other than parks, change of use and associated signage, building additions of less than 50 meters squared in gross floor area or accessory buildings and structures of less than 50 meters squared in gross floor area in accordance with policy LRDA-1." And then in changing that policy, there are 12 sections of the land use by law that are then affected by that and also need to have a change to ensure that they align. And so those are in different residential zones, commercial zones, industrial zone and the open space zone because each of those zones are represented underneath the Le Havre River Development Agreement area. I don't know why this isn't changing. There we go. Okay, so a public participation meeting was held. We received one phone call about it and three people attended the public participation meeting. None of those participants were property owners or impacted properties within the Le Havre River Development Agreement area but had a lot of questions, was trying to understand what that change, what the change would be. So it was very fun discussion, but with no concerns. So staff are recommending that council give second and final consideration. I think that recommendation gets held till the end of summer.
Thank you. Questions for staff from council? Great, straightforward, we dealt with this before, it's why it's second reading. It's an opportunity for, on this topic, if there's any members of the public that wish to speak in favor or oppose to this. Not seeing anyone tip up. Then I will adjourn the public hearing, will return to our open council session and I'll be looking for a direction from council. Someone's prepared to make a motion? Councilor Caldwell, thank you.
Excuse me, I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater conduct second and final reading of Bylaw 216, a bylaw to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use by law to approve the concurrent amendments to add a change of use and signage to the list of exceptions to the Le Havre River Development Agreement area as shown in Appendix A of Document 24-156A.
Thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor for chair. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. All right, we'll now move down to 7.4, so no more public hearings for the day. So this is a recommendation for the Winburn Avenue lots, as council knows, oh, yes, sorry.
I'd like to declare conflict of interest for this item as I am, as my employer does work for In Touch Homes, so at this time.
Thank you. Full excuse to Deputy Mayor. So as you recall, this came to council, there was a proposal by a developer to purchase these lots and that was designated for parkland but hadn't been developed as a park. And so then council had some questions and we sought public feedback on this matter and so it's returned to council. So I don't know if you are going through the steps?
Jessica's here as well, but there is a report on the agenda after stakeholder consultation, which involved Parks and Culture Advisory Committee. There's a recommendation for council to consider from that committee with respects to the first decision of council, which would be deeming this land no longer required for open space and thus surplus to the town's needs. And there's also included in the agenda, a list of residents who have contacted staff. It's based on a notice that staff provided residents that council would be considering this. They had some options with respects to how to provide input, so they could do that via written submission, there's phone. So those are the two primary, or they could come at the beginning of the meeting and address council during the delegation section. So those are included with the agenda as well.
I don't know if you had, did you have any?
Well, I can just give a couple other details. You know, per the report, the PRC advisory committee had really robust discussion, but ultimately couldn't come up with consensus on direction to provide and are requesting the, considering what people and the public have to say. And we had over 30 calls and emails, almost all of which made it into your package with some coming in today and one coming in after the bell. So there is one that did not make it into your package. But they were all aligned, although you would have had time hopefully to read all of them, including the many pages that came in today, so.
Yeah, so, you know, just on behalf of the council, I thank everyone who, all the members of the public that provided their feedback to council. That's what we were looking for, that's what council wanted, was to hear from the people in the, especially in that median area, their thoughts. This would directly impact them. So this is probably a good chance to remind the public that all the documents that we have are also available on the town's website. We don't have any extra documents in our package, so you could go to the town's website and under Town Council, you'll see agendas and under Agenda for Today, there's 209 pages plus the three public hearings, but all of these letters are, and correspondence by email and phone calls are all listed here for council. Now, I will say normally we do delegations at the beginning, but I do want to note, there's a lot of people here, I think, on this topic. And so recognizing that sometimes it can be weird to ask for people to speak at the beginning of the meeting when they know their topic is later, I do want to, with the indulgence of council, allow any members of the public that wish to just speak on this particular item, if you do want to come to the microphone and just state your name and say a few things, that's, I just, I don't want to deny anyone that opportunity.
Okay.
Yeah?
I was prepared to go last, but I guess I will go first.
Just please make sure you just state your name.
Don't worry. That's, attention's, tension's not exactly, not exactly a weak point for me. But good evening, everyone. Appreciate the time. For those who don't know me, my name is Braden Newell. I'm actually a candidate running for Town Council, but I am also a resident of Winburn. Got some smiles over there, thank you. So this is where I want to appreciate all of my neighbors and fellow community members who are coming on out. I have had the pleasure of going and visiting, knocking on just about every door in this surrounding community, every door that received that letter. And I can say that, you know, it has been an honor, it's been a pleasure. But since 2008, for over 15 years, Winburn Avenue has yet to actually receive this so-called designated park. And what I can say with little of a doubt, the vast majority of residents in the surrounding area, they want this dedicated parkland to remain and to actually become a park. There are families with children and grandchildren that want a safe green space to play, there are seniors who want outdoor spaces to walk and sit, and there are dog owners who want a social area to congregate and to chat. Now, I'm speaking from the fact that I have talked to countless residents who have told me that they are adamantly opposed to this land being sold. I lost my place, I apologize. Sure, sure, there are some folks who are indifferent, but there are, there were none that I spoke to that were actually for this land being sold. So I'm speaking from the fact that I talked to so many people, I knocked on so many doors, and I can say that this community is against, clearly against this land being sold or sold out. It is, if this council votes to sell this land, you will be in voting in direct opposition to the folks who live in this community, the very folks you represent. As a person running for council who is vying for one of these very seats and to advocate for our community, it is an ethical requirement that I stand here in front and share the voices of the people who couldn't be here today, who perhaps don't feel comfortable speaking. The reality is this community deserves better and that as much as I'd like to be, I would like the decision to be up to the next council, it is up to this one. And so is the fact that I truly, in fact, I beg you to vote on the side of the people you represent. Vote not to sell this land. Thank you. Hope that was under two minutes. Apologize.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to follow up? Come on up, just let us know your name, please.
Hi there, my name is Barbara Bussie and I live on 104 Winburn Avenue. Apologize, I took a few notes as we were talking, it's kind of an impromptu, impromptu conversation here. As I listen to the presentations about the C8, it's new to me, and talking about considering our sustainable and green future, I just wrote a couple of notes. I'm just wondering that, understanding the residents of Winburn Avenue, we've sent letters, there's been calls to the town of Bridgewater regarding the potential sale of the parkland for residential use. Who's going to be receiving these inquiries and like viewing them as a whole before the motion is made to sell? Also, what is the rationale of the town of Bridgewater to sell land previously dedicated to a much-needed green space?
Yeah, so council receives all those. So again, these are all in our agenda package, so they went through staff, so as kind of the portal, so Jessica received them. And so then they're all in our council package, so everything that was received counts as that.
So then all members will review the entire package prior?
Yeah, so...
Read all the letters.
That is our job. Yeah, so, yeah, we're, like I said, there were 209 pages for just the non-public hearing part of this and our job is to make sure that we read all that information, otherwise we're not really making decision, fact-based decisions. So that's the one. And the other was, just going to your second question.
So are we in a position to find a comment on the rationale of the town of Bridgewater for selling land that would have been previously designated for green space?
I mean, I can just comment that one of the things that we talked about was that the park hadn't been developed. I don't think it was that we didn't want any parks there, it was recognition that there's not enough parkland on that side of the river. So I know certainly I can just speak for, from my perspective was, it was the need to have parkland, but is halfway up that street the best spot for it versus bringing it down closer to where there's more potential users closer to North Street?
Unfortunately, we have a car wash there at the present time and we're kind of struggling around a bust-off situation, so I think that, I mean, if there was an alternate proposal, but I don't see any realistic option.
Right, and that's eventually what comes to the services, there's no viable land along North Street that the town owns anyway. So that was just one of the, one of the certain comments. And the other was that we are in a bit of a house... And the other was that we are in a bit of a housing crunch. And so again, looking at, okay, balancing some green space with the potential for three new homes. But again, going out, seeking the public's feedback, and then receiving that, and then council makes a decision based on public input.
And again, I'm just providing feedback on the spot. But in terms of our housing crisis, I don't know if the demographic and the price point that we would be putting on Winburn Avenue would necessarily be helpful.
No, it doesn't create affordable housing. But it does, there is a process where new housing then creates affordable housing as other housing becomes available. Some people, some people move up into other housing. It frees up some lower rent or lower-cost housing. So again, it's just, it's looking at all the information.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Any other members of the public? Yeah?
My name's Anna Marie, and I'm also, live on Winburn Ave. I guess my comments or questions are, given Bridgewater's vision to attract young professionals and families to our area, green spaces, parks are attractive to people. So how would selling that go to that mission?
So again, we do recognize there's not a lot of parkland on that side of the river. But one of the things is if we sell parkland, the money that we receive from that sale has to go into developing parkland.
Which there is no more.
Well, there's, we have a lot of parks in Bridgewater. So for example, one of the, one of the number-one needs that people have been asking for is a splash pad, right? And so one of the shortcomings we have is we don't have the funds for it. So if we were to sell the land, and that money has to be used for parkland, then it could either go to improve some of those parks, maybe bring the splash pad online.
Probably not, given that the lots themselves, the vacant land, are only selling for about $50,000.
Yeah.
But then the developers are selling the houses for 500.
Yeah. So the proceeds to the town would have been about $180,000.
That's right.
But our policy is that that money has to remain in a budget for use for parks.
Money could easily go to a park.
Yeah. And there's, and there's nothing saying that the town isn't going to develop the park. So this was just a process of asking the public, especially in that area, what they thought was the best use for that land. So just to be clear, it wasn't to go out and tell you, by the way, we're selling this land. It was asking for the feedback.
Well, let me just make a couple of notes additionally. There is over 23 children on that street currently. Most of them have to play in the street. There's heavy construction going up and down, speeding very fast. You know, delivering crushed rock in a big truck. I don't know how many times I've almost seen children get hit by heavy equipment going fast down the street because they were just playing. There's nowhere else to play. Despite the three lots on Winburn Avenue, Eisenhower, La Haye Heights, I'm sure there's hundreds of kids if someone went around and counted them up. North Street would never be a good spot. It is a very, very high-traffic area. As my friend said, we have a problem with the bus stopping on North Street and the traffic. Kids almost get hit crossing the street to catch the bus with the sign out. So just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. I have a follow-up question. Would a splash pad be considered designated green space?
Well, it's, it's within Generation's Active Park. So it's active, it's active parkland. Yeah. So we pass the parks in Active Park? So that's an Active Park. Are there comments from?
Hi. Just David Ramon again. I can't help but notice that our parks are getting used a lot. And I can see one from my kitchen. And it's busy. And that wasn't the case, that what was the old tourist bureau. There's people out there using that pretty much round the clock. And I see people really spending a lot of time outside. The idea of, you know, up at the top of the other side, not having something that's within really easy walking distance. If it's, if there's even a simple gazebo or something like that, it will get used. It will get used. And something like that can be built for not much money. Gravel, gardens, and a gazebo. And the public will take care of it, just like the public garden that's there on Aberdeen and Elm. So it really seems like it would be just too easy, and it would get used constantly.
Appreciate your feedback. Thank you. We certainly know our parks are well-used, especially post-pandemic. And I mean, I'll never forget where the province closed parks, but kept trails open. And then we re-designated a bunch of parks, trails, so that we could keep parks open because we recognized the importance of people getting out. So this certainly wasn't a conversation to diminish the importance of parks, especially in Bridgewater. And I know the deputy mayor has excused herself, but she, along with myself and Councilor Tanner, when we give a lot of physician recruitment visits, one of the first things they want to see is trails. And the second thing they want to see is parks. So we do, we do recognize the importance of parks. So again, it was, this was more to solicit the feedback from the community. Again, we try to make data-driven decisions here. So appreciate the feedback from members of the public.
The only other thing to note in the, in the Parks and Rec Committee's report to council and recommendation is that they did, they did have a recommendation regarding Generation's Active Park. And that is specifically that the splash pad and accessible playground remain a priority in the '25-'26 fiscal year. And so council, council will of course be receiving your capital budget and looking at your capital plan. So it may be appropriate at this point, unless you're prepared to state that that's what you're going to do next year without looking at the entire plan, is to receive that recommendation and defer your decision until you receive an update on Generation's Active Park in terms of phasing as well as your capital plan.
Right. And you mean deferring that just based on the generation? Just the?
Yes, that's right. That's right. So I had two specific, two recommendations.
Yeah. Okay. What is the rule of counsel? Councilor McDonald?
Do you want a motion first or conversation?
It doesn't matter. If you want to put a motion on the floor, then we can have a conversation.
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, in consideration to stakeholder input, provided with respect to the importance of Pids 606-59364, 6050184, and 60050176 as open space, that council not proceed with declaring these parcels surplus to the town's needs, and that we defer the recommendation of the PRC Advisory Committee respecting Generation's Active Park development to the budget process. Is that, yeah, it's fine.
Yep. Do I have a second there for that?
Second.
Councilor Tanner? Discussion? Councilor McDonald?
So I, I'm the chair of the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Advisory. So there was a lot of discussion there. I've had a lot of people reach out to me. We saw the number of correspondence that we received. I'm really glad that we put this out to public participation because it was absolutely the process we were looking for. We got the, we got a huge amount of feedback. That's exactly what we were hoping for. We wanted to know what the community wanted. From that, I've developed a lot of thoughts. And I had to note them because I wouldn't have remembered the minor. It's abundantly clear that our green spaces are little treasures throughout our community. Newcomers talk about them and enjoy them. We see people in them daily. They're clearly very important. There's a potential for more development in that area, which could make this park a very well-positioned park without a lot of opportunity to acquire additional green space in that area. In my conversations, there were a few people who commented on the fact that the homes on Winburn Avenue typically have yards, which is true. But there are a lot of properties on North Street that have very small lots or apartments without any green space at all. There are a lot of kids and seniors in the area who may not be able to easily access green space in other neighborhoods. And whether you have a yard or not, you don't meet your neighbors in your backyard. You meet them in shared spaces. And that's where you build the connections and relationships with your community in those spaces. Once we sell that land, the opportunity is gone. That land is owned to serve a purpose that is not currently being served in the, in the community. It's not as if we have a surplus of land. Or sorry, sorry, sorry. We don't have an excess of land, parkland on that side of town. This isn't land that's just kind of useless to us that we're looking to dispose of. So it doesn't make sense to me to dispose of land when we know we need it. I'm also not keen to place the importance of land sales and development over the quality of life of the people living in those areas. Those things have to go hand in hand. I don't think we can have one without the other. And I don't want to start tipping the scales on one being more important than the other. Or suggest that for, you know, enough money, you can buy what belongs to the community. That doesn't sit well with me. And that, that isn't to suggest that the developer's offer is ill-intended. He's simply providing housing in a community that needs housing. But there are other places to develop housing and much fewer spaces to develop parks. So for those reasons, I support maintaining the land for park use.
Thank you. Councilor Thorburn.
I agree with Councilor McDonald. I had a couple of phone calls. And this, to me, is what council's all about. We have to listen to our residents. You put us here to support you. And when we hear you come up with our issues, then I think we owe it to you to listen to you and work for the benefit of the Town of Bridgewater. And I support Jennifer's decision. Thank you. And I don't have a dog in the race because I'm not a punter. Sandra was in the race. Councilor Caldwell?
So I have been opposed to this, declaring this parkland a surplus from the start, and I continue to be. The residents of the town have eloquently described why that is, more eloquently than I can. And I would just encourage council to approve that motion.
Thank you. Councilor Tanner?
I will, I will be supporting the motion. And similar to Councilor Thorburn, I'm on my way out as well. But just a word of caution, I guess, for future Town Council, that you, excuse me, that when we're creating more parkland or when we're adding more things to parks, that you vote and be very conscious of the fact that that also needs people to maintain them. And so that we, we don't just add more parkland for the sake of adding parkland, that you also consider we need to add staff to maintain it. So just a caution there.
My, my thoughts are, like, this parkland has to have a purpose. And so I know it was in the budget last year, but it was to be developed, and it was contingent on a grant. If it's contingent on a grant again, then I hope we apply for that grant. But I'd like to see it. I'll be supporting the motion, but not that it's a condition of, but it's kind of like I'm supporting the motion. But I'd like to see this parkland developed into what is proposed to be developed into. Like, like Councilor Tanner, I mean, I remember my first year on council, where we had a number of people who, I think they wanted the tax receipt, so they were going to donate these large parcels of land to the town just for a park. But they were, they were in areas where we already had parks. And it, it was one of those moments, to your point, where we initially thought, this is great, until you realize there's a huge cost of maintaining these. Recognizing that in this particular part of the community, we are very short on green space. I just want to see that green space then developed. So anticipating in the budget this year, again, hopefully with another grant application that's successful. But if it's not, that council have the ability to debate that before we pull it out of the budget. Councilor Conklin?
What was the budget to have that developed? Do you recall?
Yeah, it wasn't huge.
It was between, the one that was proposed in the budget that didn't make it two years ago was between $15,000 and $20,000. But again, that was a preliminary estimate at that point.
Not an insurmountable amount of money.
Two years ago, so it's probably at least double now. But that's still fairly reasonable. But that would be to, what, just clear it? Kind of make it usable?
There was a, in the report, we shared a small, it was a very, very rough concept. If you noticed, with some fun little illustrations. But it was, if you recall. So some, some outdoor play, but natural play equipment throughout. So a little bit of cleared space, predominantly wooded, a winding path, and lots of places for, for kids and kids of all ages to be active.
Okay. Thanks. Any further comments? We have, we have a mover and a second question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. And again, thank you to all the members, not just for coming to a council meeting. You got things to do on a Tuesday, but for speaking. I know it's not always easy to come to a microphone and address council. I've said this before. I get more nervous standing at that microphone than sitting at this microphone, so I get that. So I appreciate you all coming out, taking the time to express yourselves. And also to, as our Director of Community Development said, over 30 people submitting their, their feedback, which is exactly what we wanted. So thank you, and thank you to council. And then we will welcome back the deputy mayor and move on to number 7.5. And you can sit here for the whole meeting if you want. I'd love you to stay, but you also don't, you don't have to. But, you know, feel free. 7.5, as a facade improvement program with two applications, one for 483 King Street and one for 706 King Street.
Hello again, council. So this report originated with applications for the facade improvement program from two property owners at 48, or 483 King Street and 706 King Street.[1579.94] oh six King Street. To date, two applications have been approved in this season's facade improvement program, resulting in an amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars remaining in the program. The property owners for two properties on King Street have made separate applications for the facade improvement program, seeking a total of five thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents for public facade improvements. Firstly, four eighty-three King Street is a two-story building located at the corner of King Street and Phoenix Street, currently authorized for ground floor commercial, with two residential units occupying the second story. Application for their facade improvement was made on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. The applicant's submission included the painting of the entire public-facing facade. The total value of the proposed facade improvements is twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars. Therefore, the requested facade improvement program grant equals five thousand dollars. The proposed improvements have already been completed prior to the application submission, but because the improvements were made in the same fiscal year as the application, the improvements are still eligible per the policy of the improvement program. The property at seven oh six King Street is a two-story building located close to the intersection of Empire and King Street, and is currently authorized as a retail sales establishment. The project includes a new projecting wall sign and accompanying window signage. The value of the facade improvements are seventeen, one thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars, and in accordance with the facade improvement program policy, signage projects are eligible up to twenty-five percent cost shared assistance for the external public-facing upgrades, up to a maximum of five hundred dollars. Therefore, the requested grant amount equals four hundred, forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. This project as well has been installed prior to application submission. The proposed signage has been approved by staff, and again, because the improvements were made in the same fiscal year as the application, it is still eligible per the facade improvement program policy. And again, there's a remaining budget of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars, bringing, if these two grants were approved, that would bring the budget down to approximately fifteen, excuse me, ten thousand, three hundred dollars. So there's a couple of options there. Approve both funding applications, one, or deny both requests.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilor Tanner?
Maybe a bit of a history lesson perhaps for me, but I had thought that a councillor one or two terms ago had initiated a change to the policy where we would not be funding business signage. It's because of a prior issue at that end of town, and...
But the policy still allows for that?
It does allow for a maximum up to five hundred dollars and only twenty-five percent cost share. So generally, the projects are eligible for up to fifty percent cost share. Signage is only eligible for twenty-five percent and up to that maximum.
Understood. Perfect. I will say, as a customer of businesses, I really appreciate when signs are perpendicular, so you can see them as you're driving. So when I saw the application, I was like, thank you. Often, you drive by, and go, oh, that was a new business. So just a bit of a hint, if you're opening a new business, you can apply for the facade program, and a great sign that, you know, people can read as they're going on the street can be cost shared. Any questions on this? What is the wish of council? Deputy Mayor Fager?
Yes, I'm prepared to make a motion, Your Worship. So I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendations of staff and provide the first five thousand dollar grant under policy ninety-six facade improvement program to storm properties for exterior facade painting of the building located at four eighty-three King Street, and as well, a four hundred and forty-eight dollar and seventy-five cent grant under policy ninety-six facade improvement program for signage improvements at the civic address of seven oh six King Street.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point six is a notice of public participation meeting, limitation to institutional uses in the C one zone. That is going to be October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M. in council chambers. So let's just...
It's just for information, the staff are starting the planning process, and the next step will be that meeting, and then a planning and analysis report to council.
And that'll be published on town's website, social media, and things like that. Okay, now we're down to Correspondence for Action, nine point one, Maritime Housing Society Attainable Home Ownership Fund. Heard the remarks from the delegation.
So as was indicated, it is very similar to our designated community fund program, the request that's coming forward, but slightly different, in that there's two parties. So essentially, right now, under our designated community fund program, an organization applies, such as the Curling Club, as an example, and they have a project, and they want to fundraise for that, but they're not a charitable society, so they can't issue charitable receipts. So they apply through the town for the project, and then individuals can come, and they can provide a donation to the town, get a receipt, and indicate that they would like to have those funds donated for that project. We put it into an account, and when the organization's ready, they come, they make application to council for release of those funds. It goes to the organization. There's no guarantee when the donee makes the donation, that you make it clear that's up to council, council of the day, as to what they release those funds for. But, you know, the intention is that it would be for what they're giving it. In this case, the community foundation would essentially provide the funds to council. So they would get money from a donee, give a charitable donation receipt, but they need to have another qualified donee that gives the money to the nonprofit organizations who are building the homes. So we have, yeah, the municipality. So we have an agreement with the community foundation in Nova Scotia that will receive the funds. Then, we need another agreement with a nonprofit that will release the funds for that purpose. So it's a little bit different in that donies aren't coming to us and looking for charitable donation receipts. We have to set up two separate agreement structures for that. So what staff are suggesting is that to accommodate that type of request, first is for council to say that you're interested in that type of arrangement, or having that type of arrangement in place, where essentially, you would be receiving money from a foundation, putting it in reserve, and then releasing those funds to a nonprofit for attainable housing. So if you're interested in that, then what I would suggest is that you refer that to staff. Staff can develop the program, and the policy changes that would be required to support that, and bring that back to council for consideration and approval.
Councilor Donald?
Just came to mind, it's a single nonprofit that the monies would be released to. It's not multiple nonprofit developers, correct?
I believe the intention for Bridgewater is that there has been one nonprofit established for that.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, there could be other nonprofits in other communities, but for this area, I believe the association has indicated, and the submission had been created.
Right, okay.
For me, the appeal of this is affordable home ownership. I know that certainly the federal government, the provincial government releases a lot of funding for affordable housing, but it's all geared towards rental housing, which means that with all the great intentions, you are still not owning something. And so rents will always increase, capped or not, and someone is always making money off of those who really are looking, the ultimate goal, I would imagine, is to have affordable home ownership, where they don't have to worry about a rent eviction or a rent cap being removed. So I like the idea of looking at some other way of getting people into affordable housing, where they have more control of their destiny. So based on the report, the presentation, this is kind of the vehicle to get, one of the vehicles to get there. So I would certainly be in favor of referring this to staff, to put something together to bring back to council for our ultimate approval, to make sure that this is what it's going to deliver. But, I mean, we hear it all the time, and also when we announce affordable housing, usually the first or second comment is, is this rental or ownership? Because we're always forgetting the ownership piece, and they're not wrong. Anyway, that's just my two cents. Tonight is just to refer to staff to bring it back with some meat on the bone, if you will. So but what is the wish of council? Councilor Donald?
Ready for a motion?
Sure.
Okay. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater refer the request from Maritime Housing Society Attainable Home Ownership Fund to staff to develop the program and structure.
Program and structure. Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you. We are down to Staff Reports and Recommendations Award of RFP twenty twenty-four dash zero three, Curbside Collection Services. And we are just graced by the presence of Gabe Waller announcing his arrival. There is a loud dog on the floor.
He's excited.
You are excited to be here. I don't feel like you'd be.
My favorite thing in the world is making presentations.
Yeah.
Talking about that, there are metro and the other MJSP board members' notes. My name's Gabe Walsh, from the Director of Waste Management for the Municipal Joint Services Board, and I'm here today to recommend the town of Bridgewater Council Award RFP twenty twenty-four zero zero three for the curbside collection services to GE's All Trucking Limited, more commonly known as GE Environmental, for a total amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents in the first year, with an annual rate increase of two point eight nine percent, and updated dwelling counts for a term of seven years. There's also a couple of provisional items we're recommending be awarded. It's the spring wood and metal cleanup and the storm cleanup hourly rate that's provided. A little bit of background, the existing contract started in twenty twenty and expires on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and we wanted to go out to tender. MJSP board directed us to go out to tender as early as possible to encourage competition and allow time for purchase of collection equipment. So with that, we went to RFP with the three MJSP partners, and the municipality of Chester and the town of Lunenburg in June. We did receive two bids, one from GE, and the other one was from Miller. GE's was, their base proposal was significantly cheaper than the Miller proposal, and it represented approximately a two and a half percent increase over the existing contract. It would run from April first, twenty twenty-six until March of twenty thirty-three. It also contains some highlights. It contains a fuel adjustment clause linked to the U A R B, to adjust based on price fluctuations for diesel, helps keep the annual price as low as possible. One, it also maintains the, as they are the incumbent, it maintains the existing level of service that your residents have came to expect here. The one significant change would be their proposing an eight-day schedule rather than the ten-day schedule, so there would no longer be any pickup on Mondays. But this could result in change in up to fifty percent of households shifting by a day or so through the week. However, that would be communicated with lots of advance notice prior to any contract changes taking place, and it allows them to more efficiently manage their routes, which has a benefit in greenhouse gas reduction, as well as disruptions to the schedule, because oftentimes, you know, holiday Monday pickups get pushed, as I'm sure people just went through yesterday. I will just touch on that, as part of the RFP, we had requested that proponents put forth sustainability options, and while sustainability was a major point of focus through all the proposals, including the space proposal that we're recommending, some of the more innovative options, like lower emission vehicles, or the four-card system that GE proposed, would come with a potential cost implication. So we wanted to allow those to be explored. It was a great innovative proposal. Unfortunately, between the large capital investment and the logistical difficulties of implementing that sort of program right now, and the required cooperation by all five municipalities for that proposal, we don't feel it's the right time to implement such a large change. Other than that, I think all the notes were in the report, so if there's any questions, happy to take them.
I know that we had an inquiry about extending the weekly green card collection by a couple of months, and as you can see, the price tag for that is hefty, like, really hefty. So just a note to council that, you have all the provisional items there. You don't have to choose them all. Just, I think that was certainly a shock to me.
I think the three months is fourteen thousand, or thereabouts?
About fifteen.
Fifteen, for the July, August, and September, and to add a month on the front and a month on the back was an extra forty.
Forty-three thousand, yes.
Good math.
We use that money for parkland. Any questions of Gabe? Councilor Thorburn?
Not really a question, but a comment. It's nice to see, at least we had two bidders this time.
Yes, thank you.
And I think that's important, so that we get the best deal for, possible for the municipal units. It's just nice to see that. Thank you.
And I know I hear a lot of positive feedback about the one bulky item that you can put out with your garbage, so I think that's well received in the community. That to continue. So, thank you.
We do hear quite a bit of positive feedback on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Conklin?
Excuse me. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater Award RFP two zero two four dash zero zero three, Curbside Collection Services to GE's All Trucking Limited, GE Environmental, for a total amount of four hundred, thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, forty-two cents during year one, with an annual rate increase of two point eight nine percent, and adjustments based on dwelling counts with a seven-year contract.
Do you wish to add the, a couple of provisional items, perhaps?
Well, I would if I had them in front of me here. I must have. And provisional, okay, spring wood and metal collection, weekly green card collection extension. Hold it. No, we're not doing that.
Storm debris collection?
So you wanted to add the weekly spring and wood metal collection, sorry, spring wood and metal collection at forty-three hundred, twenty-one dollars and twenty cents per year, and the storm debris collection at one hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-four cents per hour per truck?
Yeah, that's what I meant to say. Thank you.
Seeking clarification on that? Do we have a second there? Councilor Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question.
Our Councilor Call off. Just to be clear, not that that motion wasn't crystal clear, there is no extension of two months of the weekly green card in that motion, correct?
Correct.
It's not in there.
Just the three and a half.
I misspoke. Yes, it is only provisional item one and three.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. You gotta come back more often, Gabe.
You'll see me in about seven years for the next one?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect, thanks, Gabe.
Ah, there it is. Okay.
All right. We're down to ten point two, Code of Conduct. Deputy C I O?
Evening, Mayor and Council. You've seen this item a couple of times already, twice, this is the second time in council, and a couple times in discussion session. It's brought forward by the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. It is staff's recommendation for council to adopt the new Code of Conduct framework. This Code of Conduct framework comes with twenty-five recommendations from the Code of Conduct Working Group, and this must be ratified by all municipalities in Nova Scotia by within sixty days of the municipal election, or nineteen December, twenty twenty-four. Twenty-five recommendations are broken down into five categories: the application, the content of the code, the complaint and investigative process, training, and review. These outline the minimum mandatory standards, and staff is currently working on an additional policy to clarify issues around clothing or logos that will promote hate or partisan politics, or may otherwise have a negative effect on council. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from council? I don't have any questions. I'll just say this is something that the NSFM has worked on for many, many, many years. I would say almost a decade.
Yeah, a while.
So, you know, hats off to the province for pushing this forward. I know, I think I could speak for our council. You know, we work well together. We've worked well together for many council terms, under many different councillors and leaders, but we've always had a very respectful council that works well together with staff, but that can't be said across the province. And so as a municipal elected official, to see every municipality now have to adhere to the same, the same base Code of Conduct, with nothing you can take away, but you can enhance it, it's good. It's good for us as councillors and mayors, but it's also good for the public to understand that there is a standard now that their elected representatives have to be held to. So again, I would applaud the province for putting this forward with the NSFM. So those are just my comments. Anyone have anything else to add? If not, you're prepared to make a motion? Yes, please.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater adopt the Code of Conduct as prescribed by the Minister of Municipal Affairs, and included in document twenty-four dash one five two B.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. I'm not going to read into the fact that the motion was made by the person leaving.
Keeping my eye on everybody.
That's right. You're gonna press them and put them in your pocket. We're down to ten point three, which is changes to committees and commissions and boards, and just, you know, we've done this routinely, especially over the last eight years. When I was first on council in two thousand and four, I think we had over twenty committees. I certainly remember being on about a dozen committees. So here we are, kind of paring these down a little bit more.
So now you have twenty-five, and then you have commissions and boards. So the objective of the review was to, one, ensure that we, if members were, council members... members are appointed to external boards, that there was insurance in place, directors' errors or emissions insurance, that the committee provided value to the mandate of council and that there is an opportunity to look at how we could reorganize committees to match the organizational capacities to support committees. Because those take staff resources to do minutes, agendas, reports, all those, all those support functions. So when we looked at them, we broke them out into town advisory committees. Those are provided in table one. You have a number of those. You have intermunicipal committees or boards. So advisory committees advise council. So you establish them for that purpose. Intermunicipal committees or boards are established by intermunicipal agreements and usually made up of multiple municipal units. And so there's a separate piece, I guess, a legal document that establishes the committee and the composition of that. And then you have commissions that are established by legislation and have boards. So we have three of those. You have the Desperzay Museum Commission, you have the Police Commission, and you have the Public Service Commission, the Water Utility. Upon review, the recommendations that have been made are that council dissolve the following committees, the Bridgewater Anti-Racism Task Force. And the reason for that is simply because we've entered into a regional partnership with the municipalities in Lunenburg County and will be creating a regional anti-racism committee that will be advising the councils. The council dissolved the downtown planning advisory committee simply because the mandate has been satisfied for now and it's a longer-term project that will appear two to three years out. And there's also an opportunity to look at creating a planning advisory committee as opposed to a DPAC, but that would be at a later date. The Fire Department Liaison Committee simply because the Fire Department is, the structure's been clarified, it's a department of the town and not, not a separate legal entity. And there is definitely communications that happens between the chief himself and council. And then the Youth Engagement Committee, it's been a committee that hasn't really been active for a long time. And at discussion session, there was talk about looking at how we can engage youth in different ways, whether through membership on actual committees or other means. But there's an intent to explore that further as opposed to create just this committee here. There's also a recommendation to remove membership from the events Lunenburg County as it's in default status and has been for a number of years. And that we merge the following committees because they have similar mandates. So the Active Transportation Committee would be merged with Parks and Rec. And there's a terms of reference attached to the report that would accompany that. And we have a number of events committees, so Canada Day and Christmas on La Havre are separate committees right now. So it's being recommended that we merge that into an events committee that would be responsible for events. So we have the Harvest Moon that would be added into that. You have Canada Day and Christmas on La Havre. But it also provides room for any other events that the town may wish to establish. And there's a terms of reference proposed for that as well. And with the recent reorganization that we're, council approved and we're presently transitioning to with the museum and the recreation services that the town deliver, merging those together, council looked at the governance structure that would be appropriate and concluded that steps should be taken to dissolve the Desperzay Museum Commission. So we started some of that and had some conversations, but we actually need a motion of council to make it legit and also to then take the next step, which is to prepare the special legislation that's required to be introduced into the House, which would dissolve the Desperzay Museum Commission. And in consultation with the museum commission and the Heritage Advisory Committee, because we had originally thought when we dissolved the commission, we have to put some type of advisory body in place that would advise council with respects to the delivery of those services. We had originally thought perhaps merging, creating a committee that had the Heritage Advisory Committee and museum in one, but after consultation with the museum commission and the Heritage Advisory Committee, both committees felt that they warrant separate committees to advise council. So you'll see that attached to this report is a report from the museum commission making that recommendation. And I can advise that the Heritage Advisory Committee makes the same recommendation. So that's why the recommendation from staff is that there be, once, once the commission is dissolved or as part of the dissolution of the commission, that we draft the terms of reference for an advisory committee to replace the museum commission upon dissolution.
Okay. Questions or comments on that? Councilor McDonald?
The events committee, which will now take a few committees and merge them. Is there any concern about, I don't know what, how much conversation there was with current members? Because some have been very committed to Christmas on La Havre for a number of years. And if they're now feeling that they're being tasked with other events that they're not as interested in, are we concerned about losing membership or changing how that happens? Just doing a call out for events?
Pat's not here tonight, unfortunately, to speak to the conversations that he's had with the committee, but there would be the ability to create subcommittees so that, so if there are individuals within the community that wanted to work only on Christmas on La Havre and not be part of the larger umbrella, then that opportunity still exists.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Other questions? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Frasier, Heather Hannah first?
Yes, happy to make a motion here. I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater dissolve, dissolve the first one, the Bridgewater Anti-Racism Task Force, followed by Downtown Planning Advisory Committee, also the Fire Department Liaison Committee, and the Youth Engagement Committee. Also remove memberships from events Lunenburg County as it is inactive and as well merge the Active Transportation Committee and Parks, Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee and approve the terms of reference as proposed. And Canada Day and Christmas on La Havre committees, as they are both events committees, and approve the terms of reference as proposed. And direct staff to commence the steps necessary to dissolve the Desperzay Museum Commission and draft a terms of reference for an advisory committee to replace the museum commission upon dissolution.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Tanner. Further discussion?
Just one quick one that just came up in my small brain. That's Lunenburg County was originally funded annually by councils and so on. Are we sure there's no money left in those accounts? Do we know? Sorry to ask. We should check.
Well, yeah, I'm not, this would just remove our membership, but so we would, that I don't know because we're independent of the town, but we could
Okay. We'll check.
Follow up on that. I don't think there is. I think they were short some for events in the past, I believe, but we can welcome that.
We'll get back to you. Oh, we won't, because you want me here.
We will not.
We'll get back to somebody. We'll just talk to the chair. Whoever is sitting there, we'll tell them.
Okay.
Other comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried.
Who said that government isn't fun?
10.4, Exit 12A. Speaking of fun, Exit 12A. You didn't bring your pumpkin? Is it like a one-and-done pumpkin?
Yes.
Can we see it?
Pardon?
Can we see it? Can we see the pumpkin?
No, I didn't bring my pumpkin with me today.
It's all over Facebook. All over Facebook.
So I would highly suggest you go and wash before you try it, but hey. If I had washed it first in person, I probably wouldn't have tried it. But I did. It's done. It's in the sink. So, and it plays six. It's okay.
It's all good.
It's all good. It's all right. So thank you for that segue. It's certainly my pleasure to come before you today, in particular because as you come to the close of this four years that you've served in this term, this project around Exit 12A and its development has been a core to your endeavors and your aspirations for this community. So it's with that that I wanted to bring this forward to you this evening in looking for a request for direction that we want to present to you. So taking a step back slightly, I would like to draw your attention to the visual that's on your screens. It is updated compared to what you had in your original package. That's because we had a gorgeous day on a very beautiful autumn time that we popped a drawn-up and got you some visuals. We have a whole collection now to help facilitate it. One of the things that you'll note immediately is that Enterprise Drive, which is that curved road that is coming down through the parcel of property, our 44 and a half acres, which is the focus of our 125 acres in this current project, has some pavement going down. So this started in 2019. Of course, if you recall, it was specific to Michelin needing to move Logan Road a few feet, which then in turn became an economic development opportunity for Bridgewater in which an interchange was created, creating a new gateway to 125 acres of property within the town, but not easily accessible. This is where you are today and we're bringing forward to you a direction that we want to move forward with to guide the next several phases. I guess I'll use the clicker since it's not going to automatically go. So in briefing you on that part, when we do this, the objective of this particular lens of our project was to develop Exit 12A lands in a manner that leverages the role, opportunity, and potential of Exit 12A, the role it serves within the economic framework of Bridgewater, its trade area regionally and within Nova Scotia. And that's important here that we do serve a greater purpose and an opportunity as Bridgewater and trying to identify what that is specifically and how we will leverage this. Our second objective was to ensure that land sales at Exit 12A creates businesses or business retention, expansion, and attraction that supports existing commercial businesses, that's existing businesses, in Bridgewater and enabling their growth. In essence, we didn't want to rob from Peter to pay Paul. Whatever was going to happen at Exit 12A could not be, was not intentionally to the detriment of a downtown core or the established businesses in our community. We wanted it to, that it would solve existing commercial and industrial land constraints, optimizing highest and best use of properties within the expanding business park and throughout Bridgewater. So again, there may be other businesses existing within our community that have their eye on, ideally, they'd like to relocate to have higher visibility on the highway and direct access. So how might we facilitate that for them and creating better use of other properties within our downtown core? We are limited. We're, I always say that we are a compact, powerful little town and we only have so much property and we need to help facilitate that growth around it as much as possible. Exit 12A land sales will support and enhance existing businesses and important that it embraces our community vision and that we have a win-win throughout the entire process. So that was the framework that we began to look at. How should we move towards development of Exit 12A? Taking a second step back and wanting to ensure we were heading in the right direction, but I'm feeling we skipped a visual. Yeah, there's a jump and happening there. Hang on a second. Yeah. So steps taken in 2024. As a part of the process, if you recall, back in December and January, we paused and said, all right, what do we really want to see out of Exit 12A? How will it impact what happens in our downtown core and our other nodes? What impact might Exit 12 and the development at Cookville have? And what role and relationship might be unfolding from that perspective? And with your permission, we took a pause and we wanted to get this right as we step forward. So we hosted council consultations where we worked through a workshop and envisioned and looked at priorities that you had. We also hosted business consultations. And that was really important to the process to talk with businesses who are roots on the ground, have their finger on the pulse of what's happening, but also those who've been here for a long time and newcomers, so that we could understand where did they see the central parts of our community and how it might unfold. We also undertook a couple of studies. Specifically, we're just wrapping up the retail and accommodation gap analysis. Again, we wanted to understand what is the retail mix in the Bridgewater area specifically and what was the relationship of our commercial nodes and retail nodes in and around? How do we function and flow within our community so that we could better assess where might the opportunities be, given that Exit 12A was becoming available and what might happen as that transitions? So we've had that draft presentation before council and camera and taking into, as well as in a discussion session. So we've integrated that information. We also secured and have undertaken the clean fuel feasibility study and an evaluation framework. So we're assessing clean fuels as an option, looking at it from a transportation perspective, whether it's hydrogen electrolyzers and dual-fuel technology to support the transportation industry and then looking at the spin-off from those elements. So we are looking at ways in which we can help our existing businesses decarbonize and reduce their emissions as a part of a transportation network and how might that impact our opportunity? And we, being one of, actually the only municipal unit within the province to undertake this kind of assessment, we will be presenting what we find and sharing it with other municipal units as we look at a province-wide integration of green hydrogen provincially as well as nationally as part of a program. So that's been providing us some background. We've also undertaken our BDO zone and earlier in this calendar year, you received a report that we have received an A rating for our Woody Fiber and that's opening up other opportunities for us. We completed our business retention and expansion report, so we've got that in hand. And we did our tax revenue analysis to understand where were our most valuable parts of our community and what did that mean when we looked at development and what could be compromised along the way. Up next, we'll be finalizing our sales, our development and sales plan as well as wastewater and site remediation within Exit 12A. So there's a lot of things moving at the same time. Staff discussions continue to happen monthly within our internal 12A project team. We are consulting with our interested businesses and emerging opportunities. So those whom have expressed interest in Exit 12A to date, we've been consulting with them. They've completed surveys. It's helped to inform what kind of wastewater and water demand they may have, the space that they may require, who might they be most aligned with if we're looking at placement inside of 12A? Or do they belong in 12A? Perhaps they belong elsewhere within our community and where that might fall. So those have been unfolding as part of that process. And of course, we've had government consultations, speaking with Invest Nova Scotia, Department of Economic Development, and a whole host of others. So we've taken a lot of time to try to get this right, at least to be able to provide you with the greatest information and resources to make your decisions upon. Within the retail gap analysis, we wanted to better understand, we know that we are the hub of the South Shore. We talk about that often. We are the main street of the South Shore. What does that really mean and were we really that as we tried to understand it in relation to our five other municipal units within Lunenburg County, our neighboring counties, as well as that relationship with Halifax? So as you can see from the, this isn't preliminary anymore, this is the data coming from FBM, who did our retail gap analysis. We have some trade zone areas. We have our primary trade zone area and then we have our secondary, which are on the wings. Our trade area currently serves and sits at around 63, almost 64,000 people within that population database. When we look at the projection reaching out to 2033, it's anticipated to grow by about another 44 or 4,500. It could be higher based on the residential development components. But what was important to us in sharing that was that in fact, certainly we continue to be the
There we go. Good job, Mark.
We serve a very valuable and strategic and important role within the region and our relationship as that unfolds. We're all very familiar with what it looks like. But there's more. Sure, we'll continue because you do have it in your packages. So part of this process, when we reviewed the region in which we will be growing in population, what does that look like? And our reports are coming back to help us better understand what does that population look like? How do they act? Sometimes it's hard holding up a mirror when you think what you thought you knew about your community. The data comes out and starts to suggest something otherwise. And this is going to help us as we work with our current businesses, but also in attracting the new ones as we position ourselves to move forward. Thank you so much to my technical support in the back. Thanks, Mark. Important to us as we kind of move through this next phase, there is actually a hierarchy of healthy retail in a community. And we wanted to integrate a few of these spaces as we applied it to Bridgewater. What we acknowledged was that the downtown What we acknowledged was that the downtown is the heart of our community and that it needs to be vibrant, exciting, and walkable. And we have many of those pieces. But you as council as well during our consultations, as well as the public consultation with the businesses, they wanted and identified that the downtown was the heart of our community and that they wanted it to be vibrant. The term retail follows rooftops. So that's very important to us from an economic development perspective in that if we want retail to be retained as well as become more robust and expanded, they need rooftops. Rooftops are places where people call home. Looking at our density and looking at how we might be able to increase our housing in the downtown core to strengthen our existing but attract additional. It also is about growing housing within about a ten-minute walking distance. When we looked at the data, there's less than fifteen hundred people living currently within a walking, ten-minute walking distance to our downtown core. So when we talk about that being the heart of our community, we need to look at how do we help enhance that vibrancy? We use the example of the Halifax waterfront. Prior to the waterfront development with, long before Queensmark, when Bishop's Landing and all of the other pieces began to be put in place, prior to residential being along the Halifax waterfront, it was a desolate ghost town. Nobody gravitated to those areas. Now that they've brought residential community to the water's edge, it's active. It's vibrant. It's got a nightlife. It's robust by day. People are drawn to the water's edge. They want to be a part of that experience. So it's very similar here. We may not have a half a million people right here on our doorstep in a Halifax regional municipality, but we do have sixty, what will start to approach, sixty-eight to seventy thousand people that are coming to our community daily. And certainly through looking at our traffic patterns, thirty thousand vehicles a day passing through, the opportunity to slow them down, spend more time, enjoy themselves while they're shopping and consuming the services that they're looking for. We're also looking for the healthy retail environment that's needed so for existing, attracting residents as well as businesses. So we need to keep our vibrancy in our business community. And then finally, we need diversity. You know, we often have a lot of conversation about Walmart in Canadian Tire being at Exit 12 with their downtown. We have one of the most unique downtowns across the country where we have a mall and such a robust community of retail nestled in the downtown core. And it's a very significant draw for us as a community. There aren't many other communities in Nova Scotia that you can find that has something like this kind of retail development on both sides of the river. But we also do need big bucks. The idea is about keeping the money here close to home rather than having folks spending their income, the money that's coming into their household outside of our jurisdiction or outside of our county area. So this provides us with that opportunity to keep it local because they're going to go shopping somewhere. We'd hate to see them travel to Halifax and contribute to the emissions and taking their monies, their income that they're making here and spending it elsewhere. So that's kind of how the hierarchy sits in that we were mindful of that in the process, that diversity is important, but we need to maintain that downtown core. When we looked at what did the nodes look like? And this will start to frame up some of the next steps. We did, if you recall, we looked at the downtown. We were looking at the ten-minute walking circumference of that downtown core, and how important was that to us? And not wanting to jeopardize it with development at Exit 12A, which both fall within our purview directly. We cannot directly impact what happens outside of our town, but within our town, we can. When we looked at the economic impact of what happens in our downtown core, commercially for the town of Bridgewater, forty percent of our tax base comes from commercial. Forty percent of our tax base comes from commercial, representing eight percent of all the physical buildings in our town. So eight percent of all the units in our town of Bridgewater generates forty percent of the tax revenue. In our downtown core specifically, of that forty percent of the commercial tax base, twenty-one percent comes from inside that ten-minute walking distance. So that downtown commercial is a heartbeat, but it's a lifeblood for our businesses and for our residents who rely on it for their shopping. The existing business park that we have, which is now being expanded by another one hundred and twenty-five acres, at this time represents about thirty-five percent of our total tax base from the commercial side. So as you can see, they're both, there's a bit of a separation, twenty-one percent and thirty-five, but these are two of the strongest thriving components of our commercial sector. And supporting them and their growth and development is important. So we don't want to lose one for the sake of the other. But it's important that we acknowledge how much they are worth to us and what they help to bring to our community as a part of it and the responsibility that we have with them. So moving forward and looking at how do we want to approach what happens within our community as we start to lay out the development plan for Exit 12A? In consultation with businesses as well as yourselves, what we're saying is the downtown strategy is about creating a vibrant, dense, more dense and active downtown core. We want to prioritize housing and resident density within a ten-minute walking distance of a downtown core. Walking is important here. This is not about creating incremental traffic, appreciating that we have significant traffic bottlenecks by times. And I think there's a couple of councillors who often will say, that's a good thing. That means we're a thriving, vibrant town. Nobody wants a town that doesn't have vehicles passing through. But ideally, wouldn't it be terrific if folks were actually on foot, popping down for their weekly or bi-weekly grocery run or meandering, getting out and being social, et cetera? So really focusing in on that ten-minute walking distance to grow that density and prioritize housing, that enables us to do that. Because the more people are on foot, they don't have to worry about seeing the sign as they're driving by because they'll be able to enjoy it as they're walking by. And it drives and facilitates the rest of our healthy, active living and just causing people to breathe and enjoy the spaces around them. We'd also prioritize businesses and their adaptability and local merchants. So this is not about bringing in big chains and related. We really want to create that environment that allows foot traffic to be discovering local entrepreneurs who are getting their start and that there is a unique mix. And we have that currently. Yisk being in the downtown core as a household store, a retail store, is very unique in a downtown core. They usually aren't sitting in a downtown. We have that, and we have those other diverse complements. Mixing with independent small businesses that are just starting up or existing and have been around. So making sure that we can support them in that endeavor. We want to look at activation and programming achieved through activities, events, animations, sidewalk cafes, entertainment, creating a vibrancy that happens by day but also lingering into the evening. Right now, we are challenged. We don't have, we have less than fifteen hundred people living downtown. Why do you think we're not seeing a big, robust activity in the downtown area? Spilling along and walking along the streets and through the parks? It's because they don't live downtown. They're departing from that space. So again, creating that density will help to facilitate that. And you know, some of the work that we've done with the music on the riverbank, every Tuesday evening, bringing, drawing people down to the river's edge to be a part of that. Look what just happened with the paddling event, where we had a hundred and seventy people paddling on the river. We could have used more people on the riverbank, and we'll get to that. But to see people actively engaged in exploring those opportunities will help us to drive that activity to our waterfront. We want people to be active on and along the Le Havre River. So that's that part of that, whether we enable on the river to happen as well as along the edge. We want to retain and leverage existing anchor tenants, our groceries, our services, our liquor store. All of those core essential services need to be retained in our downtown core. They keep people coming back. It's a part of our, not just our commercial base, but our vibrancy and creating demand for all of the other businesses that are in the area. So we need to be able to support them. And then we need to keep our institutions, our healthcare, our professional services, community college, all of those, the hospital, all of those are solid resources. So we need to be able to support and keep those as a priority, and that will form where we're heading. For Exit 12A, our exit of opportunity. After conducting all of that research and digging and consultation, the priority or the area that we want to invite us to continue to move down a path of is that Exit 12A is linked to and supports downtown, enabling it to fulfill its role and potential locally and regionally. So that's critical here. We're serving ourselves, but we're also part of a bigger, we're a hub and a spoke, and we've got that momentum building for us, and we want to keep that going. So key new entrance, it will be a key new entrance for our highway commercial and business-focused commercial. It will be anchored with green and emission-reduction-enabling industries, and that speaks to our hydrogen and related. We will always need transportation infrastructure in Nova Scotia. We will always, as a hub and our connection to the balance, we are logical. We've already established ourselves that way. We can continue to grow that, and that will be a focus. We're looking at the construction support services. Again, the volume of contractors and operators that are currently in the business park and in demand, looking at reaching out. The growth that's happening in and along the South Shore, they need a hive and a hub to be able to bounce in and out of that doesn't involve having to go to Burnside and go through all the congestion in Halifax. So we have that potential here to nurture that and expand on that. There will be supporting retail for employees that are working within the business park, but also highway support services are going to be naturally gravitating to that location and will be encouraging and supporting that. Collectively, it'll serve to support business retention and attraction throughout our community, but also as a fueling service for the rest of the region, which is not under our purview, but as champions and curators of economic activity, you always seem to be leaders from that perspective. So the request for direction that we are approaching you with this evening after that exciting and riveting presentation, which I do find incredibly optimistic and exciting, is that as we engage in the development and sales plan for the expanding Bridgewater Business Park, council acknowledges the role, opportunity, and potential Exit 12A serves within the economic framework of Bridgewater, its trade area regionally and within Nova Scotia as a catalyst for business retention, expansion, and attraction. Endorsing the direction as outlined, prioritizing Exit 12A development plan to reflect 12A light industrial with highway services and supports, activation, stimulation, development of downtown, which is the Le Havre and King Street area, and increase housing and resident density within a ten-minute walking distance of downtown. And together, that would be the direction that we would continue to pursue the next phases of Exit 12A with your approval.
Thank you, Donna. Questions for our economic development guru? To me, this is incredibly exciting. You know, we are coming to the last full meeting of this council term. This has, you know, this started with the last council, but the heavy lifting has been done over the last four years. Obviously, the exciting news of the Michelin expansion is a big piece of that, but this next phase is incredibly exciting. But I think it was very wise for council and staff to recognize that as exciting as Exit 12A is, you have to do this in a way that does not kill your downtown, as far too many small communities have done. I can think of communities where my family back Ontario still lives, where they thought, great idea, we can expand the town this direction. And they essentially just shifted their entire downtown to a new downtown. And it took them twenty to twenty-five years to rebuild their old downtown. So this is a great way to recognize the mistakes of other communities, unfortunately, and kind of lift them both up. So that's my very long way of saying thank you to staff and then Donna for your direction on this, leading us down this path with Margot and others and experts. What is the wish of council? Council McDonald?
I would move that Town Council Lieutenant Bridgewater endorse the course proposed by the Economic Development Officer as presented in document number 24-155C PPT in acknowledging the role, opportunity, and potential Exit 12A serves within the economic framework of Bridgewater, its trade area regionally and within Nova Scotia as a catalyst for business retention, expansion, and attraction, and further endorse the direction as outlined, prioritizing the Exit 12A development plan to reflect 12A light industrial with highway services and supports, activation and stimulation development of the downtown Le Havre and King Street area, and increase housing and resident density within a ten-minute walking distance of the downtown.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Tanner. Further discussion, Council Tanner?
Just a quick question. Without brand names, whatever, what would be an example of supporting retail for employees in that area, do you think?
Well, I think we'll end up seeing, again, nothing is firm. But think of, think of the exit approaching trail where you see a variety of food service, gas, those kinds of pieces that help to support as folks are traveling down the highway.
Council McDonald?
And in that, that vision, do we have, has there been any interest from people that would fulfill those kind of needs? Or are we going, are we starting fresh and going after it?
We have a list of interested developers whom we've been in contact with regularly all along, and certainly through your establishment of your current zoning, you had already considered some of those pieces because of the interest that had been expressed. So we have those that are interested, and our next steps will be to reengage with them, but also position for the bigger vision out there. But definitely, there's tremendous interest. And as word is getting out that we're nearing ready to be presenting our properties on the market, interest is growing.
Very exciting.
And again, each and every one of those purchase and sale would be coming back to council for consideration as each parcel and developer was coming forward to want to acquire and develop onsite. So you'll have that opportunity to explore those as they come forward.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Done a ten-point-five second reading sewer bylaw and onsite disposal.
Okay. So this is, council's already conducted first reading, so this would be your second and final reading. The amendments, our amendments to your sewer bylaw, which would enable onsite sewage disposal systems to be situated on a lot to service development under certain conditions. So the town, town has invested, and council has invested heavily in its wastewater system and will continue to do so over the next ten to twenty years. And this is in response to a need to upgrade our system to address overflows with respects to combined sewers, stormwater, and more intense rainfalls, but also the need to address the capacity within our pipes during dry weather, meaning that sometimes during, we have some areas of town that during dry weather are at capacity. And what that has resulted in is the inability to accommodate development in certain areas. So presently, right now, we require all development to conduct a downstream wastewater assessment where they assess the capacity within the pipes and its ability to handle the development and the flow that would be generated from that site. And what these amendments are proposing are, is in those circumstances where you cannot accommodate development because the wastewater assessment identified that we're at capacity, that onsite sewage disposal systems may be considered. Now, an onsite sewage disposal system is regulated by the Department of Environment. There, there's standards that they have to adhere to. Sixty percent of Nova Scotia is serviced by onsite sewage disposal systems. So it's not a foreign technology. It's just not common in towns where you have wastewater systems in place. And the reason for that is because it's a big investment to put a wastewater collection and treatment system in, a lot of fixed costs, and you want those connections so that you have a sustainable sewer rate. So your connections will generate the revenue you need to maintain your systems. So if you put your systems in and had it as an option, you would have fewer connections to pay for all those fixed costs. So ideally, there's a connection. But in this case, we've recognized we've got a ten-to-twenty-year issue that we're working at solving, and some areas will be unlocked sooner than others. And so how do we accommodate development there? So the conditions that are being proposed under the amendments is that, one, there's a wastewater assessment done, and it's determined that it's at capacity, so we can't handle it. There's an agreement entered into that would enable the town to require proof of maintenance of the system. So septic systems do require maintenance. You have to pump them out every so often, and sometimes there can be issues in the disposal field. So those all need to be maintained. We want to ensure that when the town does create the capacity, that there's a connection. So this is meant to be an interim solution, but when the capacity's there with notice, the property owner will be required to the property owner will be required to connect. So, we're suggesting that with six months' notice, that they are required to connect, and that with 12 months' notice, they have to remove the system from the lot. The town would be able to commence charging the property owner the sewer rate once the six-months' notice period for connection has expired. So, if they don't connect right away, and as we're trying to enforce that, you can levy the rate, and you can require the installation of laterals or pipes for connection to the central wastewater system, be completed by the property owner at their expense, and you can either have that at the time of construction, so that would be subject to the engineer. They determine if we want them at the time of construction or we want them at the time of connection. So, sometimes you don't want them at the time of construction because you may be doing pipe work and the elevation of the pipe's going to change, and your laterals have to match up with that. So, there's, there's reasons why you may defer until it's time for connection. And basically, the last condition would be that stipulate that if the property owner fails to do any of the matters required by the agreement, the town may undertake the work and recover the cost as a statutory lien on the property, which means that we would recover the cost in the same manner as we do taxes. So, if they didn't pay that statutory lien, after three years of taxes being in arrears, we look at tax sales. So, there's a little incentive for them to pay that. But that's also your assurance that the work will get done. So, as I say, it's meant to be, septic systems can have a lifespan that goes 10 to 20 years or longer, and as, say, your capital plan has a 10-year to 20-year window, depending on where and what. So, it's meant to be an interim solution to enable development to improve. So, that's what these amendments would do if council so desired. The other thing that council has asked, which aren't part of the amendments because staff have to do a little bit of work, is to look at an offsetting program. So, if you take stormwater out of our system, reduce flow, you can put flow in. So, our engineering department will be looking at the development of that program, but it's separate from the amendments. That's it.
Okay. Good. Council, have any questions for staff? This is second reading. We've heard this before, but just want to make sure everyone understands it. I think it's a good solution for now, as you try to get more development to move forward and some capacity. Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor? I think Council Colwell, you, thank you real quick. You can move on to the next one, Council Colwell.
Thank you. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater conducts a second and final reading of chapter 217, a bylaw to amend chapter 24, public sewer bylaw, to enable onsite sewage disposal systems within the Town of Bridgewater with terms and conditions as attached in document 24-169A.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Colwell. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, those opposed, motions carried, thank you. Down to Q1 financial reports. Welcome our Director of Finance.
Good evening. I feel like I have a pretty plain topic after all the exciting things that were happening earlier this evening. So, I'd have, and you all have a copy of it, the Q1 report, so that's the general operating fund as of June 30th, so just one quarter into this fiscal year after the budget was approved in April. So, just an update as to where we stand as of June. As you know, the construction season was just kind of beginning and such at that time. So, you'll see that there's a report on town capital. For the most part, you're going to see in progress or completed, waiting for invoices from the vendor. So, I'm not going to go into those in detail, but certainly, if you have any questions about a specific one, I can do my best to answer those. But for the most part, just some of the kind of carryover projects that weren't quite finished at March 31st seem to be getting completed, and most things are just started in that timeframe. The next quarter, we'll have a little more information on those for you. As for operating, in Q1, we're projecting a surplus at the end of the year of $322,000. So, at least if I'm late, I have good news. And as we talk about every time, a lot of that is related to deed transfer tax. So, as of June 30th, one quarter of the way into the year, we are at 50% of the budget, pretty much, with $237,000 in deed transfer tax received. As I've discussed with you before, deed transfer tax for the month can be $30,000 or $100,000 plus. We really can't predict. It depends on the market, what's selling, if anything's selling, and then we get our percentage based on that information. So, it's really hard to predict. We certainly wouldn't want to be in a position where we budgeted $1 million and it came in at $500,000 at the end of the year, and then halfway through the year, we have to go to staff and say, "We need to make cuts. We're trying to operate on deed transfer tax." Instead, anything that comes in over that $500,000 is really, ends up in reserve for council to use for capital projects and things like that. So, I guess that's the best way to look at it. We're not relying on more than $500,000 of deed transfer tax to operate the town. And so, that's a good thing. So, we're projecting, at this point, an extra $250,000. As each quarter goes by, we'll certainly give you an update on that. Under conditional transfers from other governments, we're projecting to be $226,000 over budget, and that's related to two grants. One is an old one being carried forward for transit. Not sure if we'll get to use it this year or not, but if we don't, we'll just carry it over into next year's operating budget. But also, there was an ACOA grant received of $112,000, and so that's showing there, that will be received by the end of the year. But with that, you will also see under expenditures and general government services, just before halfway down the page, that we're projecting to be over budget on expenses by $160,000, and that's related to that project. So, we have both the expense plus a portion of ACOA funding to offset that, which weren't in the budget. So, there's a little bit of a negative impact from that, but we also have some savings, some extra revenue from other things. I won't go kind of into detail. It's in the written report, but certainly, we're looking okay at the end of the first quarter.
Great. Questions for the Director? Council Colwell?
Excuse me. Under, sorry, Kim. Okay. Other revenue from own sources there on the second page?
Yes.
Court fines are $44,000 under budget as there is a delay in collecting these. So, is this delay?
At the court level.
Because of this, okay.
Yeah, so the police budget an estimate based on what they think they're going to be able to bring in in revenue, and we're subject to the court's ability to collect on those. And so, it's kind of one of those, the best estimate situations.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And I think, yeah, that's kind of started with the COVID thing.
And we're also a quarter of the way in the year trying to project where we're going to be at the end as well.
Gotcha. And also, under parking and beautification, so expense-wise, we are looking to be approximately $22,000 over budget by year-end, but this is more on the beautification than on the parking.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, I'm not sure why they're combined that way, but mostly about trees that need to be removed, and we've incurred quite a significant expense related to that in the last check run-along.
Good. Thanks.
Other questions for Director of Finance? Someone prepared to move the... Received, yep. Yeah, you were on deck. I was. I was waiting for you.
Thank you. Worship. I mean that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater received the first quarter financial report for 2024, 2025 from the Director of Finance as submitted in document 24-176.
Perfect. Thank you. Seconded by Council McDonald. All those in favor, those opposed, motions carried, thank you. Down to purchase and sale agreement for lots 21, 22, 23, Glen Allen Drive, Intouch Homes. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to, once again, declare a conflict of interest due to my employer with Intouch Homes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Good evening again. It's my pleasure to be before you with a request for decision for land purchase. The package is included in your agenda bundle. Per the MGA section 50, you have the ability to sell land, and that is the reason we'll be before you today. The recommendation that we're inviting you to entertain this evening and consider is that council accept the $150,000 offer and authorize staff to execute an agreement of purchase and sale and buyback agreement with Mr. Karim George of Intouch Homes, conceptual lots 21, 22, and 23, Glen Allen Drive, to be subdivided from the parent lot, PID number That buyback agreement will require commencement of construction within 12 months from the date of closing, achieving substantial completion on the three lots within 24 months of the purchase and sale agreement closing. So, to take a step back, the subject lots, as illustrated on the map, are three lots that would fall directly along the roadway of Glen Allen Drive. Currently, those three lots are not surveyed. We would go through the process of surveying them. As you will note, there are three lots, but there is an allocation of a 20-foot future roadway being reserved. That's because this lot is about 100 acres and reaches back into Glen Allen, and there will be a collector street, which is the future street named at this point as Drumlin Avenue. So, that will be reserved and held back as a part of this process to protect our access points to the balance of our property. So, those are the three lots and the allocation of the 20-foot right-of-way. The background, the application for purchase and sale was received from Intouch for those three lots at $50,000 for each lot for the purposes of constructing and selling single dwellings. The total offer is $150,000. Conceptual lots for sale have laterals for services. Survey and subdivision will be required to pull those three lots from that property. We currently have a for-sale sign on the side of the highway, the side of the road, and that's what's triggering this inquiry. The offer currently exceeds council's applied appraised value policies and is in keeping with past sales of Glen Allen, of lots on Glen Allen. Policy, should put my readers on, 91. Policy 91 establishes that we will sell property at a rate of $2,450 per linear meter on Glen Allen frontage, or that we would use the Altus appraisal of 20, from 2023, that was $6.55 per square foot. So, that's what was used in this process. So, part of the discussion and going back here, the lots are listed there. Just, again, just wanted to validate for you, it's in your package, but this was the math behind assessing whether or not the offer of $50,000 for each of the properties was in fact in keeping with your two policies, and which they do. You can see the tally's off there, ranges from $144,000 by the policy 91, or $127,000 when we use the $6.55. So, just to validate that, we are in keeping with your policies. Discussion, lot sizes. While the applicant requested that they be 63 feet wide and 100 feet deep, we are commenting and will be going forward with the lots as suggested here, just to meet our requirements and be in keeping with surrounding lots that are already developed. It is important to note here, and it's one of the considerations for yourselves, that two of the lots run adjacent to the future street. Development charges have been a piece of consideration by council in the past to apply. You have options that you can apply development charges to properties that abut future streets in an effort to collect and support the development of that, of the services that will be installed to create the roadway. So, in this case, lots 22 and 23 abut along the future street, so you are, and you could consider applying development charges for the future street to be paved and created through that space. The development charges in that area, based on estimates from the planning department, again, it's best guess at this particular time, but it would add about $100,000 per lot. So, the two lots which are currently being proposed to be purchased for $50,000 would each be $150,000. So, you do have the ability to consider looking at that. These two lots in particular currently have their services and will have their access point along Glen Allen, not being directed through the future street. It has been past practice by council to consider those elements and recognizing that if you are to sell the lots at the market value plus potentially up to $100,000, it's not likely that we will secure a buyer for a building lot in the amount of about $150,000. So, but you can certainly consider other options as an alternative. Implications, there's a few here. Financial, we do, we will need to survey off these properties. We have quote secured and will be looking at taking next steps depending on your direction. There will be legal costs associated with land sales, as they always are, and it's important to note that if you waive the development charges for lot 22 and 23, they will be incurred in the future when the development of the balance of that property becomes a part of a development project. So, just to be aware that you're not garnering those additional dollars at this time to contribute to, to the future of that property. And legal, we'll be engaging them. Recommendation, as highlighted earlier, that council accept the $150,000 offer and authorize staff to execute an agreement of purchase and sale and buyback agreement with Mr. Karim George of Intouch Homes for conceptual lots 21, 22, and 23 on Glen Allen Drive, to be subdivided from the parent lot, PID 60044997. The buyback agreement will require commencement of construction within 12 months from date of closing, achieving substantial completion on the three lots within 24 months of the purchase and sale agreement closing.
Thank you. Questions from council? Quite straightforward. Someone prepared to make a motion for us to discuss? Council Colwell?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater accept the offer from Karim George of Intouch Homes to purchase conceptual lots 21, 22, and 23, to be subdivided from parent PID 60044997 for a purchase price of $150,000 total, and that the CAO will be authorized to execute the required agreement of purchase and sale and buyback agreement, with the buyback agreement requiring commencement of construction within 12 months of closing and substantial completion within 24 months of closing.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Tanner. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motions carried, thank you. Down to 10.8, which is purchase and sale agreement of Pineview Apartments expansion.
Thank you. Number, for the third and final time, before I strike out, with you folks tonight. This is a request for a decision on the property that has been identified by Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing for purchase. Again, origin, you have the, under the MGA, the ability to entertain property sales. We have two options for you this evening in your recommendation. One, the first is that council could accept the offer of $24,500 for PID 6032356, and direct us to enter into a purchase and sale and buyback agreement with the Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing to enable their expansion of Pineview Apartments for a new 21-unit building with a buyback agreement requirement to achieve substantial completion within 36 months of purchase, or that you entertain the same initiative to enable the planned 21-unit construction that reflects retaining a road reserve portion of the lot at an adjusted price based on the appraisal, provided that this does not compromise the development from proceeding as planned for, for future expansions, or for future expansions. There's a little bit of a slip there. Read between the lines. And noting that should retaining a... And noting that should retaining a road reserve inhibit the development, staff are to proceed with a buyback agreement that does not include road reserve requirement and that the substantial completion date would remain within the 36 months. So that's kind of the direction. There's two options here. One is straight up or retaining a road reserve, which has been identified in the process. So the specific lot we're looking at is highlighted in yellow. As you can see, there is no direct road access to that piece of property. It's tucked in behind the existing Pineview Apartments and adjacent to Hillside Pines. The piece of property directly behind it, you'll see number 600, it's just kind of, it tags off and connects to Elizabeth Avenue. That is a parcel of property that we own as the town and currently is road reserved, but also serves a servicing capacity for us as the town. So just that will bear some relevance here in a moment. Background, the application was received. It's lot number 21.3, approximately 24,000 square feet. It will enable the construction, this is a new build for the Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing, so this is not an extension of the existing building. It is a new facility. 21 units will bring them up to a total of 51 units. This was part of an announcement earlier this year in March with their intention to do this. Now they're proceeding with going through the process of securing the land and moving forward. The units will be one, two, and three-bedroom with ground floor being fully accessible. So it's a great project and the opportunity to create accessible and affordable housing within Bridgewater. The timing, they would like to start in the spring of 2025 and be completed by fall of 2026. We did not have an appraisal on file. Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing did undertake one, as we indicated we would require it. Fennel Appraisals did complete it. They submitted it to us. We've reviewed it and certainly accept the fair market value that they're offering for that parcel. Their offer is $24,500. Part of the discussion here in relation to the access, the property is landlocked. We're not able to use it for anything else at this time. It's totally toll, and once it is consolidated, road and water access will be via Exhibition Drive, with it's anticipated the wastewater will be through Elizabeth Avenue. The downstream assessment, again, that was required, they knew it would be required should they acquire the property. They proactive, they undertook that. We have received the wastewater report, the downstream wastewater report, and it's currently with staff for review. They understand that there will be a development agreement required in order to get the density level that they're looking for on that property and the timeframe that it will take of six to eight months to move through that process. They're aware of that, and we would try to expedite. We won't expedite it, but we'll go through the process as necessary. The encumbrances, I mentioned about the road reserve. Currently, there's an unregistered but historic right-of-way that crosses that parcel of property. Unregistered but historic. And it was, it was brought to us directly through the appraisal process, noting that that had been identified. And so we did, we brought it back internally and recognized that there may be future needs. So consulting and acquiring insight from engineering, their comments had been that, you know, never like to give up the, we heard it earlier, how much you give up the property, it makes it really difficult to get it back. In this particular case, the suggestion or for consideration by yourselves was to contemplate retaining a portion of this property as an extension of that right-of-way, retaining it for ourselves for road reserves for future development. So it would be, the question off the slate. Piece of that did in fact have a brief interaction with Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing regarding the adjustment of the lot and the impact that may have. They don't have their drawings fully done, so they're not able to fully indicate if it would compromise the development, but they're more than open. If it's something council wants to entertain and ensure that we retain that sliver of property as a part of the parcel, they would be happy to have that conversation. On the next slide, you can see where that sliver is. What we've tried to do is take a, draw that line out. So I know it's really hard without me being able to have a laser pointer to show you what we're talking specifically to, but you will see inside the parcel directly behind Pineview Apartments, we see it called reserved area. There's a sliver of property that shoots through there carving off of that full parcel. So that would be the reserve as it is currently. If we were looking at that, the parcel would be just shy of 25,000 square feet. The offer and the market value is 24,500. If we retain an 18-meter road reserve, specifically cutting across that piece of property, it reduces the property to just under 18,000 square feet, and the associated market value would switch based on the appraisal to about $18,000. So that's how that would look from that perspective. Implications, certainly survey services, if a road reserve is retained, we'll have to undertake that piece. There's some legal costs associated with the agreements, and then the final sale price may change slightly based on the square footage of that property when we arrive at the final stage. Legal, there's implications there, strategic priorities, it certainly falls within land sales, and accelerated affordable housing. From a communications perspective, it is a good news story, 21 new affordable housing units with the intention to be undertaken by the province and constructed in one of our economic nodes that we know benefits the community in having more housing in that specific area. So that's where it sits. Your options are to accept certainly Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing's offer of the $24,500 for the full PID to construct the 21 units with their substantial completion within 36 months, and that allows for the development agreement process. You could counteroffer with the amended lot size and purchase price to retain the right-of-way so that we have it for road reserve. We can undertake our own appraisal if we feel that fellow misjudged us, or we could decline the application for purchase and sale. So those are the options, and you had two recommendations that we brought back, two options within that recommendation for you to consider at this time.
And just because the first question that most people ask is when we're talking about affordable housing, what does this look like? So just for the public's information, this announcement was affordable housing that was income geared, if correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, when you talk about all the different models of affordable housing, this would be what we would call that deeply affordable or true affordable housing, that is, the rent is adjusted based on the person's income. So this was part of the 222 units, I think, that the province announced back in March, and 21 of them are coming to Bridgewater. So that's probably the first question each of us are going to get, so that's a good news answer, because that is the kind of affordable housing we desperately need. Is that kind of, questions for Donna?
There is a note about property tax levy and assuming removal exempt status. Can you clarify that? Is it a tax, is it a tax property in the end when they purchase it?
I believe it is.
Yep.
Is it property taxes apply to what you mean? I believe so. It's Pineview Apartments, Kim, that would be.
Just wanted to clarify that. Yeah. My assumption is that it would be, because it's not, could be part of that same development.
It's Tarver or Grantson Lou.
Yeah, I just have a comment. I was surprised of the value, given that it's zoned high-density residential already. And I know in there it says no road frontage, but it does say legal access either or right-of-way. Yeah, so it's kind of vague around the, I don't know if it came in lower because of the no road frontage, but it would have to have some kind of legal access through a right-of-way, either Exhibition Drive or...
It has it through Elizabeth.
It through Elizabeth?
We own the property, that is the right-of-way that we own to that parcel that currently nobody, no one else would build there.
Yeah, okay. Just questioning, like, that is high-density residential should, in my opinion, I thought it would have come in higher, but that's just my opinion.
But can it, because of its location and that it is really landlocked, because its value really only to this, like, because you have, because...
That's a frontage to be developed?
Like, the frontage has to be developed.
Okay, that's part of the zoning?
Land use by law.
Okay.
So the only way to get that is to either acquire it or consolidate it with another lot.
Right.
And there are no other lots to consolidate with, except the one we own that is the right-of-way.
Yeah. I thought the same thing too, but that's what I, my assumption is based on, it's a landlocked property that has diminished value without being able to access the, well, you can't develop a, you can't put residential on landlocked property, can you? You have to have road frontage. Other questions or comments? Someone, yes, Councilor?
Just out of curiosity, was that part of the desire to keep the road reserve? Is that that piece is landlocked without it, or that doesn't really affect it?
It doesn't affect it.
Because they're going to come in the other way, right?
It's just because of the historical nature that was identified during the appraisal that unregistered but historic, that at one point in time, there was quite likely a service road that passed through, through connecting to Exhibition Drive. In order to do that now, Pineview Apartments would have to be destroyed.
Right, goes right through them.
Yes. Because I don't think we're going over it.
Okay.
There's got to be a big, I'm going to break.
So, yeah.
That'd be cool.
But it was historic, and that's where, you know, certainly a comment from engineering, et cetera, is, you know, if we could retain it, because in future, you don't know. Something may happen to that parcel of property and that you will want the flexibility in being able to open it up across. I don't think Pineview Apartments is not planning on going away right now, but who knows what could happen.
Other comments? Or someone prepared to put a motion on the floor? Councilor Tanner?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to enter a purchase and sale agreement with the Nova Scotia Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing to enable the planned 21-unit construction on PID 600-32356 for an expansion of Pineview Apartments that reflects retaining a road reserve portion of the lot at an adjusted price based on the appraisal value of $24,500, provided this one, this does not compromise the development from proceeding as planned, and should retain the road reserve inhibit the development, staff are to proceed with an agreement that does not include the road reserve requirement and that substantial completion date shall be within 36 months of the purchase and sale date.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Down to 10.9, Matt's been waiting and waiting patiently for a ward of tender 24-05E supply and delivery of a new backhoe loader, 2024 newer.
First, I guess, since it'll be the last time I address this council, as it is to know, I would like to thank you for the past four years of service. So, and again, any of you not returning, feel free to call me.
I thought you were going somewhere.
No. I'm awkward. I just thought it was important, since it's the last time I'll be present. So, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Mitchell, for introducing the topic. I'm here tonight to recommend the purchase of a new backhoe, which is critical to the year-round operation for the Public Works Department. This year in the capital budget, we have $200,000 net HST for this purchase. Staff followed the procurement policy with the tendering opportunity closed on the end of September, with three bids received. Those bids that were received were evaluated, with Brant Tractor Limited being the lowest compliant bidder with the provisional items. Therefore, staff would recommend the council purchase the 2025 John Deere 410P tier backhoe loader, complete with trade allowance and all provisional items, with the exception of the quick coupler, to Brant Tractor for a total price of $247,497.22, including HST, or $224,439.8, including net HST, with the over-budgeted amount of $44,439.8, net HST being funded from the undesignated operating reserve. Thank you. All for questions?
Councilor Conklin?
Trade allowance of $15,000, what's that?
That's for the existing unit. There was at a time, staff were considering of keeping the unit to try to have another spare on site, mainly for moving salt and sand during winter operations, but the unit has become costly to repair, so we'll be looking for future opportunities, just not this year. So we're donating it back to Brant.
So it's worth 15 grand-ish.
Yeah. So staff could try to put that up for surplus. We have discussed that, but we feel that we probably wouldn't receive that at the surplus sale if we wanted to take that option.
Other questions? Councilor Conklin?
Can you explain the necessity of the provisional items?
So, yeah, so the provisional items, the first one being rims, so it's typical. So I guess the reason why they're provisional, staff, again, going into this capital budget, were concerned that the equipment prices might be a lot higher than what we actually got, so that's good news. So in case of, in case of a higher, our main necessity was getting the backhoe, so we thought some of the provisional items, we might wait a year or six months to buy or try to buy through operations funds. So in terms of the rims, we typically run summer and winters to save tires, so we just switch those tires each season. The quick coupler, which allows for, which we're not recommending, is just for the quick disconnect to buckets. We can look to buy that in a future year. The installation of a thumb makes our equipment more versatile, and then of course, the loading, loaded, holding valves, that is a safety requirement that is required through some of our safety work practices for removal of pumps at our pump stations. And of course, the extended warranty has paid for itself in all of our equipment to date, so we're recommending the purchase of that.
Questions, other questions from council? Someone prepared to make a motion on this exciting, that we'd all read it.
Very good. So that, the provisions don't include like a chrome package or...
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater purchase the 2025 John Deere 410P
tier backhoe loader, complete with a trade allowance of $15,000 and all provisional items, $28,773.97 plus HST, with the exception of the rear quick coupler option to Brant Tractor Limited for a total price of $247,497.22, including HST, $224,439.8, including net HST, with the over-budgeted amount of $47,497.22, including HST, $24,439.8, including net HST being funded from the undesignated operating reserve.
Thank you. Seconded by, Senator Mayor, for sure. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. 10.10, we have the building inspection report for September. Everything is busy. Remember like last year, we said, oh, look how like, just, it's up year over, year over year. And the year before, we said that about the year before, and just here we go again. So just, staff are busy. We have a discussion session notes from September 16th and October 7th, so in there, we talked about the code of conduct, which we dealt with tonight, and then I found the flood risk discussion quite, quite good. I thought it was well presented by staff. So again, all of this is publicly available on the town's website. So if you have any questions, if council has any questions, you can also reach out to staff. And then down to new business, we have the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program monthly report, so lots of things happening, a lot of people being helped by this important organization, and they continue to look for iPhones. So if you have a used iPhone that you don't need anymore, take it to the United Way, you can reach out to the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program, and they'll gladly take your iPhone to distribute it to seniors who use them to feel more connected with family and friends, and so that would be very helpful. And again, if you have any questions on that, you can reach out to staff. And with that, just a reminder, as we reach the end of this... And with that, just a reminder, as we reach the end of this meeting to vote, election is Saturday, October 19th, but you can vote anytime electronically in the Town of Bridgewater, but if you are having trouble with that, you can come into Town Hall right in the foyer. Julie has an office, she is there all day, she will be there as well on Saturday for those who need some assistance voting, so you can come in. And all municipalities have the same setup. If you're having trouble, then you can contact the returning officer and go get some assistance. So please, please vote, and I'll talk more about each and every one here at the next council meeting. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Please, Councilor Callen, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fujir. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah. Look at that. What are you going to do?